Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Canton City Council Meeting, our work session, the first Thursday, July 7th, 2016. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its product, for which stands one nation, united on indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. McGruder?
I'd like to read Saint Francis of Assisi's Peace Prayer. I think it's appropriate to all of our lives at this time. Let us pray. For obit me an instrument of thy peace; where there is hatred, let me sow love; where there is injury, let me sow pardon; where there is error, let me sow truth; where there is doubt, let me sow faith; where there is despair, let me sow hope; where there is darkness, let me sow light; and where there is sadness, let me sow joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled, but as to console others, to be, to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, and it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of our guests and visitors here tonight. Thank you for being here. You know, we have a, initially have a proclamation here that we'd like to read, and it's a little unusual, but yet, you know, wildlife is really an integral part of our environment and our community, and, and I think we all enjoy seeing wildlife among our subdivisions and on our streets, and coming in the edge of the woods and so forth. And, and it's not just larger animals, but, but, but really all the organisms, I think. And one, one, the National Wildlife Federation has asked that we take what's called the Mayor's Pledge for the monarch butterfly. Now, that sounds kind of crazy, I know, to some people, but you know, in, in twenty-year period from around, up to 2014, the monarch butterfly population decreased by ninety-four percent. It went from over a billion, now, this is, this is in the migration to Mexico, a billion in, in twenty years prior to 2014 were migrating, and in 2014, it was like sixty million. That is a tremendous drop. You know, we get used to seeing these animals that play a very important aesthetic part of our environment, and we don't really notice them that much. We take them for granted, but once they're gone, they're gone. I think you would eventually notice they are gone. So I'd like to read this, this proclamation here, and basically, basically it has to do with the planting of milkweed. Apparently, milkweed is something that really attracts the butterfly and, and helps, help them to propagate and, and continue. So I'm gonna read this. This is, whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions in America. And whereas twenty years ago, more than one billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, but in the winter of 2014, only sixty million made the trip. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and the city of Canton will be playing the leadership role by launching Milkweeds for Monarchs: The Canton Butterfly Project. Whereas every citizen of Canton can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas, on behalf of the people of Canton who will be joining me in creating a healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, I am honored to have taken the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge, and I encourage other city officials across our great nation to take a stand with me so that the monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Now therefore, I gene hybrid Mayor of the City of Canton to hereby proclaim, hereby encourage all citizens of the City of Canton to participate in Milkweeds for Monarchs: The Canton Butterfly Project by adding milkweed and nectar-producing plants in home and community gardens in an effort to create habitat for the monarch butterfly. You know, we can all do a little bit, and it'd be great to be able to think that future generations will be able to enjoy seeing, seeing those organisms just as we have been able to. Public, so we have some recognition of some new employees. Chief?
Mayor and Council, thank you. If I can have Officer Joshua Canada and Officer Gregory Ayers step forward, please. Tonight, as we have here in the past, I'd like to introduce to our community, introduce to Mayor and Council, our, two of our newest officers, Officer Joshua Canada. Officer Canada just graduated the Cherokee Law Enforcement Academy and is in our field training program. And Officer Gregory Ayers, he comes to us, retired, twenty years of service with Bartow County Sheriff's Office, and is now also in the field training program. These two individuals, during their backgrounds, during their hiring process, showed us that they are gonna be an excellent fit for the organization, just as the other officers that we've hired and the officers that we have working at our department, who are dedicated to protecting our community and serving our community. So they, both of these individuals are an excellent fit for the organization, and we feel like an excellent fit to serve you, the citizens. So tonight, just to introduce you, and we welcome them to the department. Thank you.
Welcome to the City of Canton. Okay. Public announcements. Anyone, Ms. McGruder, you have any public announcements you would like to make?
Not tonight.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. Next item, consideration to approve the agenda. I would like to say we need to amend the agenda to have an executive session to discuss personnel and possibly real estate and litigation. Need to add that to the agenda. Are there any other changes or corrections or additions that need to be made to that agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Also, in your agenda package, you have the minutes from the June 16th council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? Have a motion to approve? And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. In your agenda package, you have the financial, financials actually for the FY16 through, for the month of May. If there are any questions or comments regarding that? Mr. McGee?
I had one item that kind of stood out since it was so out of the range that I thought was important to put in the record for anyone looking at the financials to know what that was about, and that was proceeds from sale of assets. And I would ask Mr. Peppers or Ms. Ingram if they could give us just a overview of what that is, so that citizens know what this, where this money came from.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The proceeds for the sale of property, the six hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred seven dollars, of that, the vast majority, almost six hundred thousand dollars, was for the sale of the property, the Board of Education properties. And we also, during the month, had the sale of our surplus property, as was on our prior agenda. We had this sale on that, which that equipment, as it was listed by council. So that was just, just over about twelve thousand dollars.
Let me ask a question. Was that the full six hundred, or did part of that go to the DDA? Or is, or will that come from us to them?
No, that was the full six hundred thousand. It did go through the DDA, but it was the full six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have a question about that? Thank you. Good question there.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. A ten-minute public input period. We have a couple. Mr. Bonner? Andy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Andy Bonner, and I'm a Canton resident. I'm here tonight to ask you to keep Heritage Park a dog-free park. Heritage Park has been dog-free for the past ten years, and it's a very nice family park where large groups of people come to walk, bike, play soccer, have family picnics. It offers the nice shade trees and swings to enjoy in the summer months. And I just hate to see you change something that is working very well, and I ask you for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Winters?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for this time. My name is Matt Winters. I live at 521 Wooded Mountain Trail, and just had a real short, brief kind of talk to you guys about tonight. Two simple statements. One part of that statement is a thank you, and the second part of that statement will be a challenge. The thank you has to do with the due diligence you guys have done to help us with our property. My house is probably located as one might say the apex of where the water damage has occurred the most, and it's washed away both sides of my home. The backyard, we like to flippantly call it the Wooded Mountain Trail River, as it snakes down the street. And as it gets to the, to my house, it makes a left-hand turn, and it goes from my front yard through my backyard, from one upper corner to the bottom right-hand corner. Our backyard's something we've taken a lot of pride in. We spent fifteen to twenty thousand dollars on bringing in dirt, terracing that out, bringing in rock walls and things like that to entertain and be proud and enjoy our property. Every time it rains and every storm that comes and passes by, we look at with despair and anxiety, because every time more, not only dirt, but if we put down mulch or anything we do piles up on the, it goes from one end of the yard all the way down to the back right-hand side. It's pushed my fence apart. We've lost approximately a foot, two feet worth of dirt and foundation around the sides of our home, and my adjacent neighbor also has the same kind of problems. So I never come forward and spoke at this, this meeting, but I just want to put a face in a, in a, an exact home that's experienced tons of damage. And so that brings me to my first point, to say thank you. As you guys have worked diligently with my other neighbors, Jim Wendell, Nick Saka, different people, to help us with this problem, we greatly, greatly, as a community, appreciate that. Atkins Engineering is another, you know, part that you want to say thank you to and for participating and drawing the plans, and they've walked around our property, they've seen, I've got photos and videos of this, but they've seen it in person, they've, they've walked around with us. Mr. David, the city engineer, has been a huge help and a huge part in this as well. A day or so ago, one of my neighbors, who's not here tonight, Nick Saka, emailed the whole council and you two, Mr. Mayor. I've got copies, if you guys wanted it, of that email, and you can have it later, or now, either one. Just kind of collectively, we've gotten together and put like a timeline slash summary for the best of our acknowledgement of what's happened to, what's got us to this point this afternoon. And that's what Mr. Saka was attempting to demonstrate in that email, to kind of bring everything together, kind of let you guys know where we are, what our thoughts are, what our beliefs are. And, and that really brings me to my last part of my statement is, I'm a baseball guy. I grew up in Cherokee County, I'm from Woodstock, and I can remember my Woodstock High School coach still now, and I still play baseball and coach baseball, and I still instill this to my kids, is it's super simple, it's just finish, finish the drill. And you guys have worked tirelessly throughout the course of several years to help us with this project and help citizens like me try to get their, you know, property and homes back together, and something that we're very proud of and take great pride in. And so my challenge is, we're at the, I, we feel like as a community at the crossroads in a very defining moment in this project that's going on for so long, and we just hope that you take all of this into consideration, that the tireless efforts that all the council members, the mayor and everyone that's put in this project, and just try to help us finish this, and help us finish it the right way. It's not a Band-Aid, it's not a temporary solution, but a good solution that will work for everybody, and just to please stop the water. And I personally ask to please stop the water from coming onto my property. So I thank you for your time and consideration. If you guys want this, I can leave it with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's all we have in the public input period. So under Old Business, the update on the Academy Street project. Ms. Cole? I'm, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Is this work? I'll wait for him to hand it in.
Yeah, you need to go and speak into that, really.
This thing right here? [laughing].
Try to get a little more volume out of that.
Okay. Is that better? Better? Great.
I think that may be better. Try it.
Ready?
Yeah.
Much better?
That's, that's better.
I'll just stand right here.
Okay. Gary Allen?
Good evening. I'm Liz Cole, I'm with Greenberg Farrell, and we are pleased to be here this evening to give you an update on the Academy Street project. Billy Peppers just handed a diagram out to you, and it's the latest site plan that we've developed. As you're aware, there are two properties, not two properties, I'm sorry, two buildings that will remain, they will be renovated. Those are the ones here in the corners that you see. Can you see that? Okay. In addition to that, we will be adding a third building. There will be a Panera that will be located on the corner. That's this yellow building right here. Okay? In order to support that, we're adding additional parking, and that is this area that you see behind the buildings. The parking has been laid out in compliance with the City of Canton's codes. Additionally, there'll be streetscapes that surround that. The streetscape that's along Main Street, we will not be touching. We will keep that as intact as is, and there'll be plazas, outdoor space in front, in the area between the sidewalks and the buildings. The new buildings, or excuse me, the existing buildings will be renovated. At this time, we believe that those will be restaurants on the first floors, and the second floor will probably have office, and that's what we're looking at at the moment. In addition to that, to support this development, additional parking is required. And so the area that's along Hill Street Circle has been acquired, and it will also be turned into a parking lot. And so that's what you're seeing up in this corner. As you're aware, there's a large grade change in that area. In order to facilitate making this whole site work, a retaining wall will be placed in that location, but in order to keep it low, so that it wasn't obstruction, we're looking at about a ten-foot wall with increased landscaping throughout. And where we are with it at the moment is this is the site plan that we've developed based on tremendous amount of input from Mayor and Council, as well as the developer. We have a complete survey that's been done, and the geotechnical boreings will be scheduled to take place next week. Questions?
Now, what will be, what will take place next week?
The geotechnical investigations.
Oh, okay. Good.
They've already been on-site, all the boreings have been located, and they will actually start drilling next week.
Okay. Mr. Russ?
May I ask what progress has been made so far in renovations?
On the what? I'm sorry?
What progress has been made so far in renovations of either or both buildings?
They have done assessments of the buildings, but no renovations have taken place.
Is the roof complete on, on the two-story building?
I'm sorry, I really can't.
Is the roof complete on the two-story building?
I do not know, but I will get you an answer for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Russ?
Is Panera committed? Do you have an agreement with them?
Yes, they have looked at the site, and they like the site very much, and yes, at this moment, that is correct. One thing that will be required is a drive-through, which is what you're seeing in this area right here, and they are committed to providing the facility. They do need the drive-through, however.
And I, and I will say that the developer, you have accommodated the city's request to move that exit off of
Yes.
Main Street there, bring it back around on, on Academy Street. So, you know, from my perspective, that, that'll help a lot right there.
That's correct.
I, I do have one more question.
Sure.
I go to Panera a lot when I'm traveling, and they're, they're great, but I'm noticing that to enter the building, it looks like you're gonna have to cross the street right in front of the drive-through, so you're always gonna be crossing.
Actually, the main entrance will be in the backside here, and also this way.
Oh, I see, you're gonna be parking on the front end, on the backside, so, okay.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wilson?
Sure. Which of the parking, you may have said this, Liz, but which of the parking is designated for, for Canton, for the city?
That would be probably, at this point, located in this space through here. What we're looking at is, because of the grade transition, it's a real challenge, as you all know, right? So this area down here will probably be designated for employee parking, which makes the most sense. In this upper location where it's nice and flat, that's where we're looking at the public parking, as well as that was where all your ADA accessibility parking will happen as well. Otherwise, we're looking at tremendous ramps that would have to occur. You're welcome.
Ms. McGruder?
One more question. The parking at the rear of the property that you said would be employee parking?
That's down here.
I, that makes good sense that during the day, it would be exclusive employee parking. In the evening, might it be available to public?
Sure. I'm sure we can work that agreement out, that wouldn't be an issue. But the idea, and I hear what you're saying completely, is that for these folks, for the employees, to park down in here, if it's a restaurant, it would still be open in the evening. But the idea would be to encourage them to park below, so that it's easier access for patrons to the site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good job. Looking forward to seeing something, getting, getting going there.
We are.
I was re, I was really pleasantly surprised and pleased that, when the, when I saw them on the roof there repairing, I, I would suspect that that roof is probably complete, you know, I mean, they were on it a couple of days at least, maybe longer, working on that elementary school roof.
Great. We'll get you an answer right away, and hear from us early next week on the status.
Good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Item B, under Old Business, discussion of the implementation of the recently approved LCI master plan. Mr. Peppers?
As council knows, at the last meeting, you, you approved the master plan that was brought for, forward as part of the LCI process. Now that that's been approved, staff's coming before you, asking you how you would like for us to look into the implementation of that plan. As, as, as we know from the discussion, there were lots of questions related to, you know, streets and changing streets from one-way streets to two-way streets. There's things in there related to use of land, there's things in there related to transportation improvements related to bike lanes and things like that. From our perspective, we want to know from you how you would like for us to proceed with that. Would you like for a committee to look into parking? Do you want us to go out and do the research on parking and bring it back to you? Not parking on, on the streets and things like that. How do you want to proceed?
Any comments? Any suggestions? Ms. McGruder?
There were several items in the LCI update. I think all of that's too much for one committee to take on. So I like the idea that Mr. Peppers presented recently in a conversation, that we take each element and have one, a committee for each element. And I do think that looking into the two-way pairs needs to be looked at by an expert, along with a council member, you know, just to keep us informed about what's going on, and then the other elements divided up by committees.
Those, those goals and tasks that are listed in there, and try to group them into three or four major areas, and bring that back to council at the next meeting with a recommendation as, as how we think you could break it up, and then y'all could determine how you'd want to staff those committees, if you'd want to, you know, maybe put a council member on each one, and then assign some, some people from the public or representatives from different fields to be a part of that. We'd be happy to do that.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Anyone else on that? Okay. Thank you. Next item, discussion, possible action on Wooded Mountain Trail drainage improvements. Mr. Peppers?
Sure. Where at the last meeting, we asked to, to table this, just to look into some other, another potential option. We currently have two contractors in the city that are doing paving projects. One of the things that we wanted to look into specifically on Wooded Mountain Trail was whether or not we could impact some of that water runoff through paving and some ditch improvements, as opposed to going through the full-scale project that was laid out with, with stormwater. Just as some backup information, as it relates to Wooded Mountain Trail, originally, when the development came into the city in nineteen ninety, it laid out a [inaudible] streets in that neighborhood. And, you know, there was this time when the city went back and forth, or whether it was private street, public street, what have you. What it [inaudible] Wooded Mountain Trail was what was described as a one-sided street, not a private street, but a one-sided street. Basically, that said, a one-sided street will be used when the [inaudible] on the downhill side of the street are feasible, but lots on the uphill side would result in undue grading and destruction of existing tree cover. Rides of way will be thirty feet wide, and streets will be eighteen feet wide. Streets typically will not have curb and gutter. The design intent is to give the appearance of a mountain lane. Keeping the cross-section of the street narrow will avoid excessive [inaudible] subsequent loss of tree cover. Drainage swells and occasional collection points will handle the stormwater in these areas. Front yard building lines will be a minimum of ten feet from the wide, right-of-way line. So that's a little bit of history on the street as it is. We currently have exactly what, what's defined here. We have, we have eighteen foot of paving and thirty foot of right-of-way, and what you have as part of the bid was to go in and, and make major improvements to the stormwater utilities within that right-of-way that we have, which will get us curbing on one side, will improve the existing storm, and will also improve the ditch that's on the, on the interior side of that roadway. The ditch part has always been an issue, and this will correct that. It is a very expensive project. There is a possibility that maybe we could go in on the public work side with the low bidder and figure out some things that we might be able to do to bring the cost of that down. In reaching out to our two paving groups, we did receive, one of the pavers said they, they wouldn't look at the project, they had too much to do, and, and they just felt like there was some significant issues there, they didn't want to be involved. The other paving group, who was also a bidder on the project, gave us a quote, just to pave the street, that was about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the paving. We would, of course, be responsible for grading, so there's additional cost there. As you have before, you have a hu, a four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar low bid to do the street. There's an owner's allowance in there. If we took the owner's allowance out, that brings the cost down to about three-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars. Roughly. Roughly, it's about half of it is stormwater improvements and half of it is paving and roadway improvements. The actual paving part's about a hundred and three-thousand dollars, so we're actually getting a pretty good deal on paving as part of the bid compared to what we were offered from the other bidder. There are some other improvements that are related just to the street side, which includes dealing with that inside portion of the street, keep the, keep the asphalt from crumbling off that was put into the bid. But the majority of the project cost is stormwater-related. The issue that we have as a city is when the street was approved as a one-sided street, there was a different stormwater standard at that time. And so, when they looked at it, that's, that's what they felt like would work. A ditch, a storm drain and some minor storm improvements as it related to the street. What we're doing as part of this bid, though, is we're going above and beyond that. We're taking it to stormwater standard of today, which will have a positive impact on the residents, but it is an additional cost. So, you know, the options that we have before you are, we can, we can take the low bidder and, and, and that cost. We could take out the owner's allowance. You could, you could say, here's a maximum price without the owner's allowance, negotiate, let's see if we can get that down. Maybe we can get Public Works to do some improvements in there as part of it. We could reject them all, pave the road, fix the ditch, and that might be less, but it's not gonna deal with all the stormwater issues on the residential side. Or, you know, that's, that's really it that we have for you. But we did wanna look at that alternative to see if our existing paving contracts could do the work and could do it in a, in a less expensive manner, get us the same results without nearly the full-scale project.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, Mr. Peppers, would we be able to use a good amount of stormwater fees that we have on this project?
So, this project was basically split up financially. It would come from splosh, from the paving side, the roadside, and it would come from stormwater on the stormwater utility side. And there was money put in the stormwater budget, there are funds there available that were budgeted specifically for this project.
So, if we use those fees and the one, other ones that you just mentioned, what, what's the total project that we're looking at? You said there was a couple of ways we could look at this, what, what's the total number?
The total on the bid was four-twenty.
Four-twenty.
And we have invested, what, eighty-five in the
Engineering.
Engineering already.
Okay, so it's five-hundred thousand. Do you know how much we have in stormwater that we could allow?
We, 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 we can afford the stormwater piece out of it, we can afford the splosh piece out of it. The problem is also, I mean, it's a very, it's a very engineered project.
Okay.
From, from the standpoint of the property owner, we're going to be rebuilding all of the aprons, all of the driveways on every home on that street because we're going to have to change the pitch of the road and we're putting in that new curbing. And so, it's a very impactful project. So, from my perspective, before we decide to go that route, we have to see if there's a less, a less impacting option. And so far, we haven't come up with that option.
One other thing, if we were to do that, is that, in your mind or our engineers' mind, a permanent fix? Or is this something we're gonna have to revisit again in another eight years or so?
Well, you know, I think if, I think if the city provides the curb and gutter and we improve the stormwater on there, I mean, we, we will have built the road to the current stormwater standards. I don't think we would be responsible for doing anything further on that street as it relates to stormwater. Paving, I mean, that's one of those things you're gonna have to do with all city streets over a period of time.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Peppers, on the Atkins, the eighty-five-thousand-dollar engineering study that Atkins did, did that, did their findings inform the four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, the permanent fix? Or was that, if I remember correctly, their findings were, was maybe a less-than version of that? Or, I'm just trying to see if the engineering study matches the solution we've been out.
We had, we had two options from Atkins. The original o, option that came in had stormwater improvements that involved about four, five properties along Wooded Mountain Trail, about a hundred feet, four-hundred feet of new curbing, and had a couple of improvements to the, to the ditch side and to the existing stormwater facility. The problem with that is water doesn't always decide to wait till it gets to the curb to, to deal with, to, to get into the storm drain. And so, you're gonna have a number of properties on that street that weren't gonna have a stormwater improvement. And so, if you go to build that and then you have to turn around and you have to add to it over time, what we asked them to do was look at the street as a whole and come up with a better option for the street as a whole, as opposed to dealing with those four or five properties. That's why we came in with a much more expensive project. There's issues on that street. Cul-de-sac is a tight cul-de-sac, we have issues on that street where the pavement crumbles towards the ditch side, the ditch isn't significant. You know, as it relates to what was, what was turned in on a bid, I mean, it is a, like I said, it's a heavily engineered project. But it, but it's also important that the residents understand, we're not widening the street. It's still gonna be a narrow street, it's just gonna have a curb on it and an improved ditch on it. And it's gonna be a very intensive work project to get to that point.
So, on the, the low bid, the new solution, four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, is that gonna require additional engineering to what Atkins has already done, or was that included?
No, that is, that, that bid is based off of that total engineering of the street.
And you're saying that if we take the owner's allowance out of it, it's three-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars total?
That's correct.
And you're saying that there's a possibility that if we went with that low bid, that the city could possibly provide some of the services and, and get our costs down?
If you decide to award the bid, we can sit down and negotiate the contract and see if there's anything in there that we can do to bring that cost down further.
Thank you.
Mr. Rust?
Bill Grant just said almost exactly what I was gonna ask, that you're really looking at, even though it's four-twenty, we're really looking at a net right now, three-eighty-six?
If you take the owner's allowance out, now, the thing about the owner's allowance, it's always in there in case something happens. And I think one of the, one of the concerns related on that project to several properties is you're dealing with their driveways, as you're, you know, dealing with things like that, so.
But if we approve this tonight, we're really approving four-twenty, expecting to, out of pocket, to be three-eighty-six. And you're gonna try to get that number down. So, if we approve this, are we approving four-twenty and then you're gonna negotiate beyond three-eighty-six? Or what's, what do you want us to do? You want us to approve, you want us to approve the contract or come back with another number?
You could approve it at four-twenty, you could just, I mean, if you wanted to, you could. We required an owner's allowance in there, so we could remove the owner's allowance. But then again, if we make any changes, we'd have to come back before you with a change order. But at the same time, if you, you know, it's up to you what you want to approve from a dollar standpoint.
Well, I'd like to save money, but not at the expense of not doing this right. Because if we're not gonna do it right, we're gonna have a problem coming down the road. Or the street.
Awarding, awarding the contract based on the low bid. And then we would be working that down through the negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
I just want to be sure that the, the people who live over there know two things. One, that the city, that the specifications of the city streets will be met. And number two, that their driveways are going to be affected during the, the upgrading of this street. So, there will be a period of time when most everybody's driveway will be affected, affected, and they can't get in and out, right?
And, well, yes, because we'll be paving on, we'll be, we'll be putting concrete aprons back down on those driveways. The big concern that I still have, though, is that we have twenty-four properties on that street. As part of this process, we sent out twenty-four, twenty-two letters for right-of-entries to be able to do the work. And we have four of those that are still outstanding.
Three?
We got one today, so we're down to three that are still outstanding.
So, we're, we're looking to get the other right-of-entry letters signed.
Correct, and that's one of the things we would really like to see the neighborhood help us out with. I mean, they're, they're the ones that may be out there that see their neighbors and we really could use their help in getting those turned in.
Good.
Did I, did I hear you say a hundred and three thousand was included in that bid for paving? One oh-three? One oh-three. Would it, would it be a, a possibility of, of approving that, that contractor that is the low bidder and authorizing the staff to work with that contractor expeditiously, hopefully, to find the best solution? Authorizing, you know, paving is, is gonna be part of it, obviously, but go ahead and find the best solution for that drainage. And, you know, maybe from the council stand, maybe cap that at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, since we've already, we've already spent eighty-five, but it wouldn't, wouldn't include that, so we would've, we'd be talking about three-hundred-and-sixty-something thousand for the street. Would it be, is that a possibility? And if, if, if you found that you could not do the thing properly and for the best resolution of the drainage situation, you could always come back to the council and say, I need something else.
Yeah, hold on one second. You know, the paving, it's not just paving. This project has got some milling, some leveling, it's got some full-depth reclamation, additional base and, and things like that. So, it's not, you know, just a strict paving job on this. I think we're changing the pitch of the road in some areas. It's, it's more involved than, than, than just paving.
So, the one oh-three, one oh-three is just the topping?
Yeah, it looked as though, I pulled out all the, the line items the best I could on the paving. And looking at the base and the tack coat and everything else, it seemed as though it was around a hundred and three. There is a representative from Atkins here, if you have any more technical questions or specific questions related to design that they might be able to answer for you.
I guess my question was, what does it cost to pave that street?
Well, like I say, it's not just paving, they're at, doing some areas where they're rebuilding it a little bit as well.
Okay, I ju, I just threw that out there, I thought, you know, it might be, instead of just having an open-ended thing with the four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand plus another eighty-five thousand, that we, the council maybe put a cap on that. Because if, if it were as little as a hundred and three thousand to pave it, then that gives you probably quite a bit of money to go in and, and do the, the drainage improvements there. But it's up to the council. Let's see, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Would you explain what the owner's allowance is? How much is that for each home? And then I have another question.
That's, that, that's our allowance as the owner of the project, it's thirty-five thousand dollars, it's a work allowance that basically is a, is a percentage of the project. So that if something happens while they're doing the project, instead of having to come back with a change order for everything above the unit cost that they've provided, there's a little bit of allowance in there. Or if, if we see something that needs to be done while they're in there, we can ask them to do it as long as it's within that thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, and you say we have not gotten three letters from residents for permission to, to tear up their property? We can't start this project without those letters, can we?
We can start, they're just walking to their property.
I can't hear you, Dave.
We could, we could start it, we just wouldn't be able to do anything with their particular property.
Thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Grant? Go ahead.
I think, based on the mayor's statement of two-fifty and the fact that this contract says four-twenty-six, we should be somewheres in between. So, if we approve this tonight, our target is to get to two-fifty. I would hate to put a restriction on it, two-fifty, to get the thing done because I think it might really hamstring and ma, make a contractor reluctant to go forward if you're gonna, he, he has to pinch where he can't pinch. There's certainly not that kind of profit in this thing, I'm pretty sure. But here's a, here's a novel idea, since we have to always go in for change orders to raise the price, why don't you come back to council every time you have a change order to reduce the price? I like, I mean, we, we know where we wanna be. We, we, two-fifty may be impossible, four-twenty, we know is, is gonna go. Somewhere in between there is a good number and anything we can take out of that is good for us, as long as it doesn't destroy the integrity of what we're trying to do here, do it right. Or don't do it at all.
I think the, the key thing for us is, if you decide to award the low bid, it gives us a ti, a chance to sit down with a contractor, with our Public Works Department, with our engineering department, with utility partners, and we can look at everything in here and see if there's some things that we can do to, to make this go faster, to, to have it done before the project starts or to do it as they're do, like, for instance, there's the setting of the water meters that's in here, you know.
I, I hate to tie your hands.
There may be things in there that we can do and, and, and that gives us the ability to sit down with the low bidder and say, hey, let's, let's reevaluate some of these things and see if there's things we can do in there.
I hate to tie your hands, but we'd be real happy at two-fifty. I mean, no, I, I, I'm just trying to say, no, sitting down to negotiate when you have a pretty tough number to hit makes it real difficult to go anywhere. So, I'm trying to push to get the number as low as we can. Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, if I remember correctly, my motion at the last meeting was to delay the vote until this meeting and two options, the vote on the low bidder, to accept the low bidder, or on an optional plan. While I hear some things, talking about some options, it's not actually a plan. So, while I don't, I'm not excited about the price of this project, we've been dealing for, for a long time. I think if we're gonna address it, we need to address it and do it right. And therefore, I would like to make a motion that we accept the low bid, bidder. Can we do that not exceed the four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars? And also instruct staff to sit down and discuss with the contractor to see what portion of the city could do to possibly bring that cost down. And then also with a condition that we receive all the right-of-entries before proceeding.
Second. You made a motion, right?
Yes.
Were you making a motion?
Yes.
Seconding, second.
All right, Mr. Goodman?
Yeah. Well, that was what I was thinking.
Okay, I'd like to ask a question, the difference, a right-of-entry is not a constituted construction easement, does it? So, how do you, do you not need a construction easement?
No, the, the, the construction limits were identified on the plans. The E, the right-of-entry basically authorizes a contractor to go in, make the repairs and improvements and put everything back the way it was. So, it's, um.
So, that's not a construction easement then?
It's not a construction eas, and I think when you come down to it, it's essentially the same result, but it's a different way of doing it and it's, and it's, it's a lot easier from our standpoint.
Okay.
We don't want it back the way it was. We don't want it back the way it was, but I know what you're saying.
Well, put the yards and driveway back.
Yeah, I know, I, I know that, thank you.
I would ask one other question, has a stormwater advisory board recommended or approved the utilization of the stormwater funds for the, for that purpose?
There were funds that were approved in this current year budget by the stormwater board for this project.
For this project? Good, okay, great. We have a motion and a second, anyone else have any comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voting for the motion. Okay. Next item, wastewater treatment plant update schedule.
As we approached the contractual deadline for the plant, we obviously have, have passed that. Some of that was, you know, my, looking at schedules, I thought our substantial completion was on June twenty-ninth, when it's actually final completion. But in fact, we knew we had a significant amount of rain days that we were dealing with, that we still had to add on to the, to the end of the project. So, we just wanted to kinda give you an update of where we stand schedule-wise. We've got representatives from ESI as well as Heavy here to, I think Heavy can explain a little bit more of their progress, as, as well as some of the dilemmas and, and, and problems they've had in getting the project completed as, maybe as quickly as we thought we were going to and.
So, what is, what is the scheduled completion now?
Right now, we're still negotiating the, the amount of rain days to, to extend.
Hadn't been in those lately much, have they?
No, but would these go back to the beginning of the project where, I mean, we were in the vicinity of anywhere from, you know, fifty to a hundred days that we're looking at, so we're still negotiating what would be considered a rain day and whatnot, so.
Okay, Mr. Grant? Okay, Mr. Grant?
Yes, to date, what, how, what percentage of the wastewater treatment plant is completed?
I would probably say at least getting the, the new part of the plant up and running. I'm gonna say 70, 75%.
Okay. Cause I noticed that we've spent to date 5,767,625, which is 69% of what the GIF loan is. So, are we on budget?
With GIF loan, yeah. We actually have, if, if everything goes without any additional change orders, we'll still have about $500,000 that we didn't spend in the loan.
So, that would cover the $400,000 we had in contingency. So, you're, you're saying you expect the project to come in under 8 million, slightly under 8 million?
Under 8.4.
Okay. 8.4, 8, or 8 million?
8.4 was, was the loan amount.
Okay. But you said 500,000 under?
That's about what we have left, assuming everything goes, you know, if everyone max, you know, finishes out their contract with no additional changes, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Peppers, the discussion of the mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia DOT.
As you recall, we have been working with DOT at School Zone Beacons for Knox Elementary School on Knox Bridge Highway, Highway 20, headed towards Cartersville. And one of the things that I had requested from G, from GDOT on this project, we're responsible for providing the electricity to the beacons. And the beacons are not actually on our right-of-way. We have very little right-of-way as it relates to Highway 20. But if we're gonna provide the electricity to those beacons and those beacons are gonna be seen as our equipment, I wanted to make sure that we had the ability to trim around those because the last thing we want to do is have school beacons in and have tall grass around them and people aren't able to see them. So, what you have before you is an agreement that allows us to cut around those beacons even if it is outside of the city's right-of-way. Mr. Rust?
Hey, Billy, one, I, I have noticed where those beacons are. One going over the, over the Route 20 going towards Cartersville is above the road. You won't have to mow around that one.
Correct.
They're on wires across. The other one is quite a ways down the road and that's mounted on a pole. And...
And at the time when we requested that, they didn't have the designs in. We didn't know if they were gonna do the side of the road beacons, overhead beacons. And so, this agreement just gives us the opportunity to go in and do any maintenance we might need to around those poles, whether it's cutting grass. If we have any issues with, you know, limbs or trees or something like that, we can go in and handle it ourselves.
If it, if it fall, gets knocked down, because one is on wires across. If a tree knocks it down, do we have to go in and repair it?
No, that would be GDOT.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, I just want to mention that I hate for us to go the extra effort, but that is a major interest to our city. And, and I think keeping it well maintained is in all of our best interests. So, I'm in favor of anything that will allow us to do that more properly than it's been done in the past.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay. Next item, new business discussion of the city acceptance of private streets. Basically, what I had spoken to our city manager as well as the city attorney regarding those is that currently we have a set of development standards for city streets. If, if a private street is developed, that private street must conform to those development standards. Some time ago, however, we made some changes apparently through a, a resolution. I'm not sure exactly whether it were an amendment to that ordinance. But I would like to, which would allow, that allowed the city to go in and accept streets which quite honestly did not meet city specifications. I would like to, I don't know if we need to revoke that or cancel that resolution or amend the ordinance itself regarding acceptance of streets. But I'd like to see us go back and do that as they must meet the city specifications at the current time in order to be accepted. I think we, I think we get into a real, real jam when we, you know, you got some that don't conform here, don't conform there. They've been there 15 or 20 years and the, the private development where the streets are, I want you to take them over then when it gets time to be resurfaced and maybe a lot of work to do on them. So, I think we need to revisit that. Mr. Rust?
I, I think there's two issues here, Mr. Mayor. One is streets that we're gonna take over that are already developed and not meeting our standards and can never meet our standards. If we go in and look at those streets and determine they're up to standards that we will accept, that's one thing. And I don't know if we can create an ordinance that, that doesn't address the issue that, for instance, which we recently did in, not Pinnacle Place, but Prominent.
Prominent.
Prominent Point. Well, we did it in Pinnacle Place too, but Prominent Point. And those were, the standards were different and we accepted them anyway. But when you have a new development, a developer comes in, wants to put, do whatever, he's gonna have to meet strictly our ordinances as they stand. I, I just think you gotta be real careful that you allow a, a rule like that to be, to, to allow someone that doesn't meet the standard to come into the city because we're gonna, we're gonna want to do that. Is that what you're proposing that?
Yes. I'm proposing that they would need to meet city specifications if, once they're accepted, whatever that is at the current time.
Before they're accepted?
Before they're accepted, yeah.
So, it doesn't matter if they're old or new?
Right. I mean, I just think, you know, I think if you have, if you have private streets, a development that is developed particularly for private streets, I just, I think they, they should remain private. And unless they can be brought up to our city specifications, and then we would gladly take them over. I mean, that's just my thought.
But what we recently did and then we, we shouldn't have done.
No, I didn't say that because we had the authorization and the approval of the council to do that. So, I mean, what we did was what the council wanted to do at the time. I'm just suggesting this is what we need to do in the future. But, you know, I don't get to vote unless it's a tie.
Well, I, what, what would you recommend, Billy?
It would be a lot easier when development comes in if all the streets in the city were built the same way to begin with.
Well, I agree. But we've, we've got some things that are hanging out there that we gotta live with.
We do. And, and, you know, and I think, I think the biggest thing is the city needs to be very aggressive. When a developer says they want to build private streets, all of those streets should be behind a gate. And, and, you know, when, when you've got a situation like that, then everything else needs to be handled the same way as well. You know, the utilities should be on a master meter. And we shouldn't be going behind the gate to deal with anything on those private streets because it's not our right-of-way.
Well, when they want to take down the gate and turn it over to us, we'll just say no.
We don't say no. We say...
If they're not up to our standards.
Correct. And that's why it's so important for those developers on the front end, if they think that's ever gonna be an option, to build those streets to our standards.
Even though they might be behind the gate?
Even though at first they might be behind the gate.
Well, how many streets do we have that are below standard in the city? Does anybody have any idea of how many miles of streets can be?
We have, we have streets in the city that range from, you know, Riverstone and 575 size and capacity, all the way down to Little Quincy Place off of Oakdale Road that is dirt and is 10 feet wide.
If we had not prior approved, priorly approved as a council, Wooded Mountain Trail, we would not have been able to do what we did tonight with Wooded Mountain Trail. If you have an ordinance that prohibits that coming into the city, we'd have, we, what are we gonna do? Have it and then break it as a council every time we want to? Break the rule?
What we could do is we could pull together a list of streets that don't meet the 50-foot right-of-way that we currently have. That, that's really the big issue is, like with Wooded Mountain Trail, you're starting off with narrow right-of-way anyways. There's only so much one can do. And when you've allowed the plaits to be drawn and you're still considering it a city street, I mean, we can't turn around a fire truck in the cul-de-sac of Wooded Mountain Trail. I mean, much less you can't turn around a, a truck, a personal vehicle.
Another big issue, Billy, another big issue other than right-of-way is the fact that, for instance, in Pinnacle Place, they didn't have, the sewers were not wide enough. They were like 36 inches. They were supposed to be 48 or something. I think, I'm just pulling that out of my memory. But, and we accepted those. So, that would be some, it's almost impossible to change that. I'm just trying to give us in an ordinance, the wiggle room we, we'll need to deal with those kind of issues.
As a city, we will continue to face the sins of the high growth and development period that the city went through for a period of about eight or 10 years.
Before we were...
When it was not managed properly, the right staff wasn't in there to do the inspections. We're just gonna be hit with those issues as they come up. But I think, I think what the mayor's trying to say, which I think is an important thing to remember, is from this point forward, you can set the rules.
I agree with that 100%. So, we, if we got another high-growth period coming, starting now or whenever, we gotta make sure that we hang tough. Don't, don't approve things that don't work. Period. Done.
I think that's very wise advice.
I agree. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Item B, under new business discussion of the blight management plan development.
As you'll recall at our retreat back in March, the number three priority of the council was to look at blight and develop a management plan for it. And we tasked Chief Mitchell with helping to build that plan. And he subsequently has, had put together a committee that had representatives from community development, the building department, our code enforcement, police department, fire department. And Mr. Rustbridge also said on that, they looked specifically at several items to address as part of that management plan. One was looking at the definition of blight as it relates in our, in our codes and ordinances. And to try to determine the difference between where it fits in with the building side and where it fits in as a nuisance, because those are kind of two different ways to look at it, which, which is true blight and which is a nuisance. Because as you know, with C, Click, Fix, people will say it's blight, but it's really not blight, it's a nuisance. There's, there's a clear definition between the two. We also wanted to look at our structure for code enforcement as it relates to other communities and how they tackle code enforcement. For instance, here in the city of Canton, we do code enforcement through our police department. Some cities do code enforcement through civilians and not through their police department, through their building department. So, we wanted to look at that and see if we could glean some best practices on how that's done. We also wanted to talk about ways that we could engage the citizens and they felt like they could report blight issues in a way that was getting response. You know, the thing about C, Click, Fix is you type it in and you have to expect that on the other side somebody's looking into it. And sometimes things have fallen in through the cracks there. And then finally, the last two things we wanted to look at, we wanted to look at how we as a city deal with demolition orders related to blight and how we can provide additional oversight for that for the council. And if there's a way that we could partner with, say, the housing authority to do things that might be incentives for some of these properties to get them, get them out of a blighted status. Mr. Patton and Mr. Rustbridge sat together and looked at, looked at our unified development code on the definition of blight, looked at various ordinances. Is it, is it related to nuisances? And, and basically what we came back with is our, our codes have all the materials that we need in there related to blight for us to do enforcement. We just need to make sure that we understand, the council understands how all those things break down and what the remedies are and what the actions that can be taken on those are. Additionally, like I said, we did reach out to other cities to look at their code enforcement, how that, how that set up. One thing that this, this group has recommended is that there should be a phone number here at City Hall where citizens can call in, report blight, have a live person pick up the phone, take the information, listen to the issue, and also have someone on this side at City Hall that's a civilian that can start the efforts towards blight issues such as finding out who the owner of that parcel is, finding out information about that parcel, making an initial contact over the phone with that owner, letting them know, "Hey, you may have an issue with the grass. This is what the code says is related to the height of grass." You know, if, if that's gonna continue to be an issue, then that person would turn it over to code enforcement. And then we would make an officer visit as opposed to the officer being the first person to visit the scene. Sometimes you can get people to do things if you, if you kindly remind them what they need to do as opposed to showing up with the blue lights. Sometimes we need to show up with the blue lights. We need the, we need the stick to get things done. And we understand that there's that balance. Sometimes there's things that we can provide from a staff level to remind people that, you know, if you live in a neighborhood as it relates to some of these blight issues, some of this is dealt with through your covenants. And here's the contact to your homeowners association. And maybe you can force the issue through them and you'll, you'll get some response a little bit faster because of those more restrictive covenants. So, we looked into that as well. On the, on the demolition orders, what they have, what they have laid out is, is what we can do related to that. What they did find is partnering with the housing authority involves federal processes and that just delays the, the prospect. But what they feel, what the, what the group felt like was that our current ordinances give us a lot of opportunities. We have in our current ordinances, this, this idea of a rental property registry, which basically says if you own rental property, you're supposed to register it annually with the city. And it gives us an opportunity to inspect that property and make sure that property is up to code for people being able to inhabit it. Also, for us to be able to set a maximum occupancy on that and for us to be able to look into those things. And when a property is vacated for a period of time, we're supposed to be notified of that. There's a really great piece of information in here that I hope you'll look at, which is the memo from, from Mr. Rustbridge, which basically lays out the violations as it relates to blight and nuisances. And, and there's some things in here that, that I don't think we've used as a city, but there are tools in here that we can use. Besides that rental property registry, for instance, there's a section in here that allows us on unfit buildings to impose a tax of seven times the millage rate on that property and a process of hearings that we can do and, and setting up a plan of action with that property owner to, to deal with that and a way for them to, to bring that, that rate down. So, I would encourage you to look at that. If you have any specific questions on it, email them to us. We'll try to get with the members of that group, try to get responses and try to get those responses back to the council as a whole.
Any, any comments, questions? Mr. Grant?
First of all, I want to thank the committee for excellent work. There's some great information in there such as the blight tax and the rental property registry. And I kind of agree that, you know, kind of the first step is, and I'm glad to hear that it's all in our existing code. But the first step is getting us, especially as council, all understanding, you know, what we're defining as blight. And to really coming up with an action plan, a concrete action plan that we can publish or at least put out to the public saying, "This is, this is our policy. This is, you know, what we're gonna start enforcing from this day forward." So, I think the sooner we could get to that, the better because we've been dealing with this issue for a long time. And I also wonder, I didn't notice the committee didn't include any council members. I didn't know if that should be an option, just so we're more in line with what's going on and, and some suggestions there. Cause I know several council members have worked on this issue. But I think it's great information and I would just kind of ask when we could possibly get a concrete plan together.
Sure. Well, one of the things that's come out of, of this entire discussion, and I'll pick on him, Officer Sweptback here, who is one of our code enforcement officers who's security for us tonight. One of the things that he brought to our attention was, "Look, if you've got an area of the community where we've got significant blight and we know that we have issues there and we've got, you know, property owners who have garbage piled up, they've got tires, they've got things in their yards that are out of conformance, we could, we could as a community go in and work with a partnership, maybe with waste management, have a roll-off brought into that neighborhood for a period of days where those property owners can dump at no cost or maybe a low cost or something like that to encourage them to clean up." In a lot of cases, people don't clean up because it, it, it's, it's a mentality and it's hard to get started. And, and they don't see an easy way to do it. They, they think about the logistics of how they're gonna have to move things around and where they can take them to and all that. Maybe we can help motivate them in some cases to be more active participants in that cleanup process.
Okay. Ms. McGrath? Mr. Greer?
I like that idea very much about getting the city involved in a friendly way and to offer some help. I think it's a very good idea. Thank you for that. And when you talked about a rental property registry, would then rental property owners need a business license because they're getting income from property?
No, you know, the, Mr. Rustbridge might talk to this a little bit more. The way, the way the rental property registry is set up, it basically would say that anybody that owns property that they rent within the city should register that with the city. You know, if you've got an individual who bought a house in one neighborhood and then decided to move into another neighborhood and until they could sell their house, they're renting it, you know, and they do have tenants in it, do we want to make every citizen go through that process? You know, part of the issue that we have as it's related to blight is not so much the person who rents the one house, but the person who's renting five, six, seven, eight, nine properties. And they're, you know, they're getting cash for those properties and they're just not putting them back in, putting the money back into the properties. What we may want to do is, is look at that and say, okay, here's the threshold. It's not renting one property. Maybe it's renting three properties or two properties. What do we think is that delicate balance between a citizen and the right to do something with a property that they own and somebody who's clearly doing it as some type of income stream? Does that make sense?
That's exactly what I was getting at. If I needed to move and couldn't sell my home, I wouldn't be doing it for business purposes. It would be because I couldn't sell my home. But for somebody who owns two, three, four, and seven properties, that's kind of a business. So, you were, you were answering my question.
Well, and what it allows us to do is it allows us to go in and say, look, this is a home that's in a single-family area. The definition of a single-family that we have in our code is, is the following. The occupancy is this within that home. This was not meant to be a subdivided home into eight different units. This is a single-family home. And that's putting the owner on record, you know, on notice that that is exactly what the purpose of that property is. If you're going to rent it, it's not going to be to multiple occupants with dead bolts on doors that don't even meet our fire codes.
And what are the consequences to that boarding house?
Well, you know, from, from the perspective of the rental property registry, if it's, if it's, if it's utilized, they would have to come to the city within a certain amount of time every year and register that property. We would be able, if we wanted to, to go out and inspect that property. And if we find that there are building code violations, there's fire code violations, then we would be able to cite that property owner. We could evict tenants. If it's, if it's found to be an unfit building, we can fine the property owner. If we found that it's an unfit building, then it, it falls from being on the rental property registry back into the development code for an unfit building. And technically, we could at that point go through the hearing process and tax it at seven times the millage rate until it's brought into compliance.
Thank you.
Or we could, or we could ask them to go through the, the process of demolishing the structure.
Mr. Rust?
This question kind of comes because of our budget meeting the other day when the chief mentioned that he's got, we've got two code enforcement officers and then one unworn officer or person that goes out on, on calls. In the step two of the process, when you're trying to determine whether the call is a blight call or a nuisance call, would you ever make a decision not to send that sworn officer to the higher-risk one or nuisance where somebody might not be, be more receptive to taking the, the authority of the police officer versus someone that comes in a regular clause?
Well, so for instance, if you get into an issue of, of, say, the height of grass, maybe you've got a citizen that, that has a health issue or something like that and, and it's something, maybe they maintain their property very well and they had a health issue or they, you know, they're getting up in age and they can't take care of it. It'd be much easier for us to go out and say, hey, this is what the, this is what the code says. Do we need to go out? Do we need to try to find somebody that can go out and cut that grass for you? As opposed to sending an officer that might, even though our officers are very friendly when they do it, I mean, they're gonna assess the situation when they get there. They're gonna see if somebody comes to the door with a broken leg. That's probably why the grass hasn't been cut. But it, it, it may not embarrass that property owner as much. If we take the time through that administrative process to note the nuisance, you know, but there are clearly situations where it is true blight. There are issues as it relates to the structure and we probably do need to send the officer first. But we're gonna have to do the research regardless. And so, what we try to say through this plan is having that administrative person here at City Hall that's pulling all that information together. It cuts a little bit of the lag work out for code enforcement so they can, so they can be riding around looking for those major significant issues and keeping up to date with those items that are currently cited or that have been warned in the process to make sure they're being dealt with.
So, so the short answer to my question is you might take into consideration the fact that if you have a choice, you might send the unworn officer to a lesser risk. I'm only concerned about the risk of the, the officer or the unworn officer, the individual that goes out.
What we would strive to do on the front end is, first of all, if, if, if we have the option, if they're a utility customer and we've got their phone number, let's call them first. Before we, before we send somebody out, let's just make a phone call if we can.
Ms. Wilson?
This was one of the items that we addressed at the, at our retreat. And I want to commend the committee for bringing it back to us. They met in May. They've met a couple of times, I think. And now they have brought back their findings. One of them is to have someone, as you mentioned, someone here at City Hall that be publicized that people can call. And I'm really interested in the city being proactive rather than reactive about the blight. So, I want to be sure that we follow up. And I'm assuming that at the July 16th meeting, we'll have some of this that we can approve, right?
Sure.
And the second thing I wanted to ask is, I haven't been down Main Street in about a week to look, but, you know, we have a demolition that we voted on. How, where are we?
The house is down.
Oh, good.
There's still some, there's still some site work to be done, but the actual house is down.
Did we put a sign up that said this is part of the city of Canton's blight removal?
No, but we did receive a lot of phone calls thanking us.
Okay. Well, if we can do that so that, so that our citizens will know that we've taken a proactive approach.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Young?
It looked like Chief Mitchell had something-
I'm just gonna answer Mr. Rust's question. As far as the uniform officer versus the, the civilian officer, we do that now. He, he goes and handles the, the tall grass and the tires and those types of things now. A lot of times his initial contact, and sometimes he doesn't even go out there. He makes the phone call and that handles the situation. It's where we have to follow up and if citations have to be issued, where the uniform officers go out.
It just seemed logical. I'm glad we're doing that. Thank you.
That's our practice now, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All righty. Next items. I'd like, I think we could probably take items C, D, E, and F since they are all related to Laurel Canyon in a common conversation and discussion here, if that's okay. And so, those items include, C is Discussion of the Case AX-1605-001 Lifestyle at Laurel Canyon Request to Annex 3.309 Acres for a Second Entrance Road. D is Discussion of the Case Z-1605-001 Lifestyle Laurel Canyon Request to Zone Property from Cherokee County AG to CD-PDMU. And item E, Discussion of Request to Abandon a Portion of Laurel Canyon Parkway. Request to Abandon 4.467 Acres, which are, which is about nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-six linear feet. And F, Discussion of Request to Lifestyle Laurel Canyon to Move the Existing Gate to New Location on Laurel Canyon Parkway. Okay. Mr. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, these are, these items are interrelated to an extent. The first item, first portion is the annexation of property into the city of Canton. The annexation is 3.309 acres. This annexation is proposed for the purpose of constructing a roadway that would serve as the second public entrance into Laurel Canyon. The second part of the discussion, if you will, is the zoning of the property if city council is inclined to annex the property for that second roadway. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing in regards to the zoning of the property. The Planning Commission did recommend that the property be zoned planned development mixed use to be consistent with all of the zoning for all of the Laurel Canyon property. It's currently AG Agriculture in Cherokee County. The Planning Commission did suggest a condition that Cherokee County Engineering be consulted and their requirements complied with as it relates to the entrance at Pocket Creek Road. Third item of the overall discussion is there has been an application to request that a portion of Laurel Canyon Parkway be abandoned. It is approximately one-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-six lineal feet from the existing gate entrance at Soleil in what I would call a northeasterly direction back towards State Route 140. The fourth component of, of overall discussion is requesting to relocate the existing security gate along Laurel Canyon Parkway based upon abandonment of a portion of that roadway. The attorney for the applicant is here to answer any questions. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there other property owners along that nineteen-hundred square, uh, hundred lineal feet other than SEC?
Adjacent to the sixty-foot strip, yes.
Yes.
Yes, there is one property owner on either side of that.
So, in addition to SEC, there's two other property owners?
There are two property owners that would be on adjacent property to the sixty-foot strip that is under contract for purchase to build the roadway. If you're asking if there are any homeowners adjacent to this new roadway, there would be no homes adjacent to the proposed new roadway.
Property owners?
Yes, there are property owners that- to the proposed roadway.
Only two?
Yes.
Okay. And that's in addition to, I guess, SEC?
Correct.
Okay. So, it'd be three total property owners there. Okay. Ms. Greer, you got a question?
Yes, thank you. When talking about the rezoning of the property, are we speaking of rezoning only the paved surface and the right-of-way?
It would be the sixty-foot strip in its entirety that is incorporated with annexation. The actual roadway itself will not take up as far as the paving. Will not be the entire sixty-foot strip. There will be some shoulders, slopes, grassy areas, if you will, on either side of the roadway itself within that sixty-foot strip.
And I, to refresh my memory, but as I recall, there's been only one person opposed to this. Could you tell me if there are more people opposed and what their opposition was to this annexation and rezoning?
Our office did receive some telephone calls as well as some citizens that came into our office in regards to the matters of- no one did show up at the public hearing on the zoning of the property. One of the things that was mentioned to me personally was it would be adding traffic on the Pocket Creek Road. And- the night sky were the two specific things that I heard.
Can Pocket, Pocket Creek Road handle the estimated traffic increase?
According to Cherokee County Engineer, he indicated yes. They are in the process of doing upgrades to Pocket Creek Road currently.
And explain about the night sky disruption, please. What was the concern about that?
They did not say anything other than it would affect night sky. Night sky generally is associated with someone that looks at the stars, at their telescopes.
Will this street have many streetlights on it? How far apart will they be?
They will have to meet the standards within the Canton Unified Development Code.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, with regards to the planning and zoning suggested condition, the applicant worked with Cherokee County in terms of the roadway design at the intersection with Pocket Creek Road. How, can that condition be enforced or, or how's that, is that just a recommendation or?
Well, the Planning Commission suggested a condition. If mayor and city council is inclined to make that a condition of approval. Our office did meet with the designers, with the applicant, and with county engineer. The county engineer had talked in terms of a deceleration lane. And I don't even think he specified a fifty-foot taper acceleration. But that's what- about the main thing was deceleration lane at the intersection with Pocket Creek Road.
So, if we were so inclined to include that condition, would that require the developer to meet those recommendations from Cherokee County?
Yes.
Thank you.
In other words, the county would have to sign off on those plans?
Yes, relative to, you know, that entrance with Pocket Creek Road.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I understand if, if the road, if we abandon the road, that the developer will maintain the road as, as we, as the city would normally maintain the road. Abandonment doesn't mean that we're not gonna keep it up.
Well, it would be, become a private road and it would be up to-
And the developer has agreed to do the maintenance.
The developer or homeowners association to maintain that abandoned portion of roadway.
And I also understand that it is in the Transportation Comprehensive Plan for the county that a light has been requested at 140 Pocket Road and Burris Road.
That is my understanding as well.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, I was gonna, um, just suggest, since this is a very, we know this is a complex issue here and since we're dealing with an annexation, a rezoning, an abandonment of a roadway and relocation of gate. And I know we've been talking about this a long time, but I was wondering, I would like to suggest if possibly we would consider a separate work session just for these items to kind of go through them in detail, just so that we were all very clear on, on what we're dealing with here.
I think it's a good idea and, and make sure every one of us had, had a clear understanding of exactly what's what with respect to the, particularly in my mind, the location of the new guard, guardhouse and gate there. Make sure how much space there actually is between the guardhouse and the, and the intersection which comes before that. I, I think we could do that, and we could do that between now and, and, you know, probably next week or so, we could do that. And it wouldn't slow anything down as far, as far as any final approval goes.
Yeah, and we'll make ourselves available next week for either a, a public work session or if you wanted to get together, one or two council members, mayor.
I think we'd, I think we'd own this all at one time. We'd just have a special call meeting just for that purpose.
Sure. We'll make ourselves available to be there and, and answer any questions that you might have about the, the proposals.
Great.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wilson, you got something?
I just reiterate that I'd like for us to do it before the January, I mean, July 16th meeting because this is something we really need to get going on and I agree.
You mean the 21st?
If we, the 21st, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think we really don't want to hold them up, making the second entrance at all. So, if we could have that meeting before we get, are ready to vote on this, that'd be great.
I understand. I, I think we need to be clear about how the abandonment process is going to take place. And that's one of the reasons I asked the question, are there other- and that's one of the reasons I asked the question, are there other property owners along that road right-of-way? If you just abandon to adjoining property owners, somebody else is going to get part of the right-of-way technically, but, you know, from a practical standpoint, I'm sure it probably wouldn't work that way.
And Mr. Mayor, when I was speaking in regards to two property owners, I thought you were referencing the proposed roadway that would be the second entrance road.
Oh, no, no, I was talking about the other one. Are there any other property owners?
The abandonment portion, I believe all that would be adjacent to that section is property that is owned by Southeast Capital.
Okay.
There are two duplex units that would be behind the new gate, if you will, that their access would be behind the gate. If you'll recall, in the master plan amendment process that went about last year, those property owners were in agreement in regards to their access point being behind a relocated gate. Mr. Snell was one of those that spoke at length in regards to that matter. But like I said, the adjacent properties.
Mr. Mayor, it's also clear in the statute in terms of who the property would be abandoned to, that if we're dealing with a subdivision, that the property can be abandoned and it seems to be the preference to the community or homeowner's association instead of adjoining property owners. It can be abandoned to the association if it is the association that is going to assume maintenance.
So the HOA would own the streets as I guess they do throughout the?
Correct.
Okay. Throughout Soleil, okay. Makes sense. Mr. Russ?
Well, I really support the idea of, of a meeting like that because I think when we met on Tuesday, I think it's a very complex issue and having, sitting across the table and only discussing that issue really, really helped me understand it. And in fact, when we talked about that gate and moving the gate, it was great to be able to sit there with you and say this would work better and you took it up and did it. So I think it's real important to make it clear to everybody's mind when they vote, they know what they're voting on, so it's, it's a good idea.
I, I think it is, it's a good idea to go ahead and look at that and so that everybody gets all their questions answered at one time and their minds are concentrating just on this and not on 25 other things. We have a gentleman that would like to speak. That, I assume he would like to speak, he raised his hand, but our, our policy is the council can allow that with a motion and a second or not. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
He's going to tell us.
Unfortunately, that's a process we have to go through.
Go to the bathroom and wanted to know where it was.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide a little input on this. My name is Bob Halasy and I'm a resident of Soleil, a five-year resident of Soleil and a, a person that has moved twice within Soleil, so I'm a stakeholder. And in, in your work session or whatever is to follow from this, I hope you provide the opportunity for the residents to provide input. You mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the homeowner's association, but I want to remind you that the homeowner's association is controlled by the developer, not the residents. So before any decision is made, I, I hope you provide the opportunity for the residents of Soleil themselves to provide input to your deliberations.
Do you have any, do you, you have any comments that you would like?
I, I would, yeah, if, if it's okay.
Sure.
I, I think it's very clever, the way the developer has joined the notion of compliance for the second exit, the mandatory second exit, with the request to move the gate, the security gate, and, and to have the city cede 2,000 feet of public highway to them. Very clever in, in doing that, combining those two issues. They're separate issues, they shouldn't be combined. One is mandatory on the developer. The other is your choice, but look what you're doing. You're putting on us the responsibility to maintain 2,000 feet of highway. It goes from a public road to a private road, plus maintaining the cost of the new security gate without any input from the residents. You're getting input from the developer, you're getting input maybe from the homeowner's association, which is controlled by the developer. So I think in fairness to the people who are going to be footing the bill for this decision, we need to have an opportunity to provide some input into this decision.
Did you have an opportunity at the planning commission?
It's on me. I did not know that that meeting was occurring, but I, I spoke with of it either.
We always have at the beginning of our meeting, even that, we have a public input, as you probably saw tonight.
Yes.
And we don't really restrict it to 10 minutes, but we welcome any comments you might have, even at that, but, you know, I, and there also will be another time at the beginning of the meeting on the 21st that you'd have an opportunity. Now, I don't know, we, I'll have to ask to confirm with the council whether or not we want to have public input during our discussion, which is only a fact, hopefully a fact gathering meeting for us to allow, better understand what is being asked, okay? We're not, we're not going to make a decision in that meeting, hopefully, there won't be a decision at that point.
I mean, it was on me that I didn't know about that planning commission, but I, I want to
Understand.
Point, point out to the council that Soleil is a retirement community and a lot of people are on vacation during the summer months, so.
I, I understand that.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
But we do welcome your comments, Mr. Russ.
I have a question. You know, I understand how this works where the developer controls the HOA. I lived in a community like that for 12 years and, but do you have an advisory board of directors and are they effective? Would they be good spokespeople for the whole community? That's a hard question to answer, maybe if it's bad.
As I understand it, there, there are seven seats on the advisory committee. Three of them are allocated, I'm, I'm not sure of that number, but a minority of the seats is allocated to the residents. The, the developer has a majority control over the seats on the
Is there a chairman? Is the chairman an S.E.C. person also then?
The chairman is a resident of Soleil.
A resident, is a resident.
Yes, sir.
Would that person?
But they have, they have no authority, I mean.
No, I understand that clearly, but I, I wondered if maybe if we were to allow someone, maybe rather than have a crowd, we're trying to get something done in a small group.
Yes.
Is there one person that could be an effective spokesman for the residents?
Well, I, I'd like to think that the chair of the homeowner's association would be that person, but in a previous meeting when this was discussed, not in this room, but in the upper council chamber, the chairman of the committee, in my mind, who's no longer a resident of Soleil, was in the back pocket of the developer. He recommended that the, the, the changes that the council later rejected to their credit.
Is there no longer a chairman? Has that chairman moved from the community? It can't be a, they are no longer the chairman of your advisory committee, right? So you don't have a chairman?
We, we do have a chairman, yes, who is a resident of Soleil, but again.
The current chairman, would that person be a good spokesman for your whole community?
Yes, but my experience has been that that person bases their opinion on their own feeling. Now, we, we have done a couple of surveys. There's a, a mechanism called Survey Monkey where you can get input from all the residents, collate that input, and come up with a position by the community at large. And I think that that's one of the things that ought to be done before a decision is made about the issues that are before the council.
Could you give your name and phone number to, to the mayor tonight and we will get back to you and let you know if we can allow you, someone to come in?
I will.
Because then we, we could go through you to determine who the right person is.
Yes.
The spokesperson, if that would help.
Be glad to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again for the opportunity to
Thank you.
Make comment.
I'd like to ask a question. You mentioned Survey Monkey. Have the residents of Soleil done a Survey Monkey survey to see what the majority wishes?
Issues that were addressed in previous surveys were expansion of the clubhouse and, and certain other amenities in the Soleil community, which the council has addressed in past sessions. I don't know whether that answers your question or not, but there, there have been two or three surveys that I'm aware of.
What I'm asking is have the residents done a survey to find out the majority's opinion of this? You could do that and bring us that result by our work session.
That would, that would be a wonderful opportunity to provide input to the council by the residents themselves rather than the developer or the homeowner's association, which the developer controls. That, that would be wonderful.
Is that something you would do?
Me personally? I, I would be glad to do it, but this Survey Monkey is a, a commercial
Yes.
Survey entity that contracts for such work. But I, I would be glad to railroad it through the appropriate homeowner's association officers, and I'm not one of them.
Well, any information you can bring is certainly welcome to listen to, listen to the information.
Terrific. Alls I'm asking is the opportunity to provide input to the council from the people directly affected by your decision.
Do you have data that you can print off from your blog?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Do you have data that you can print off and show us from your blog?
Yeah. I'm, I'm having difficulty hearing.
And I'm having trouble
I was in a rush to get to the meeting tonight and I ran off without my hearing aids, so. But
I know Soleil has a blog.
Yes, we do.
And do you have data from this blog that you could share with council?
Relating to?
The abandonment of the road.
I, I don't think there is a, a solid base of information that would be meaningful. It's, it's not been, as far as I know, a topic that the community itself has been surveyed on.
So survey might be the way to go. Thank you.
All right.
Billy, your lap's not on. You want to speak?
Sorry. If, if I could just mention one thing, I would encourage the council, I, I think what you're trying to do is get some public input on it. I would caution you however, that utilizing surveys and things like that, you don't necessarily know who's participating in them, how many times they're participating in them. There's not any scientific background on that. It's, it's clearly a communication tool, but it's not a scientific so you have to kind of take that with a grain of salt as well. I just remind you of that.
Well, the, the Survey Monkey is a recognized opinion and, and survey organization that's respected within the social science community. I, I know that. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, sir. You, go ahead.
Could I ask Jill one question? Since he's had a chance to talk about S.E.C., let's give you one minute to tell us what you think about a survey. I mean, I, we're going to try, we, we do not want to make a decision based on a one-sided, this is what you want, we're trying to look at all the facts, you present the facts, they're presenting opinions of people. What do you think about, if we are presented with some information, what's your opinion? Has, has the S.E.C. ever gone out and looked at that type of information? What did you find?
I would agree with the city manager peppers and say that it, it's not a scientific study, a Survey Monkey is, is not a scientific study. So I would, I would also caution you in, in looking at the results of that survey. I would also say, just, and you've got legal counsel, but I would say that there, there may be some issues with authority when you start surveying the residents to hear what they have to say. You can certainly take into consideration what the residents have to say, and I think that that is a valuable part of public meetings and it's good to have discourse. I think you have to be careful though in delegating legislative authority to non-legislative people.
I can assure you, we will not be delegating our authority to make that decision to anyone else other than this council.
Sure.
Okay.
My response would be, we welcome public input from the residents at a work session that we will also attend and we'll try to answer all the questions from council and from mayor at that time and from the residents of Soleil. I think that is going to be the best, the best way for council, mayor and council to get the residents, the residents' input and feelings towards all of the petitions that are before you, the annexation, the rezoning, the abandonment, and the gate relocation, rather than a survey that's really in an uncontrolled environment.
I know it, it may sound weird, but I don't think it's our responsibility when you've got two sides coming in for us to seek out information on one side or the other from an opinion standpoint so much. I think it's our responsibility to offer the opportunity for input to come freely from both sides and somehow or another, I think that's what we have to do. Although, you know, we welcome all the information, any citizen or group of citizens want to, to have regarding an issue, we welcome that and we'll look at it and then, of course, then we will make that decision. Mr. Russ?
Well, I, I think the one thing that I was trying to avoid by looking for an individual who could be the spokesperson, we don't want to get into a, a situation where we open this thing up and we have 300 people show up with, all with different opinions, because we will get nothing done in this work session.
Right.
So I think the one thing I would hope we will do as a council is we'll make a decision whether they're allowed to come or not. Not that we're trying to shut down their, their input, but we're trying to get something done. We're trying to weigh the facts as they're presented that we have to vote on, and I think there was ample opportunity unfortunately for people to come to the zoning meetings and if they didn't come, that was, we're certainly going to say, okay, that door is now closed, but we still want to hear what you had to say, but I think we as a council are going to decide, yes, you can come or no, you can't, and they shouldn't weigh anything on that except that we're trying to get something done.
Right.
Regardless of whether we would allow input at that particular work session or not, it will be a public meeting and the public would be invited to attend that meeting.
They might not be allowed to speak because, I mean, we can't take 300 people and get anything done, so that's
I think you have to play it by ear, kind of.
Yeah, I agree, and that's going to be his decision, but.
And just to clarify, so the meeting would be a public meeting held next week and then the final vote would still be scheduled for July 21st?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's the way, that would be the plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this issue? Okay, hopefully we'll gather all the facts and the city manager will set up a meeting at some point next week that'd be convenient for the council members to, to be there. Okay, item G, review of the finance policy. Mr. Nathan, I guess?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city's current finance policy was adopted in February of 2007. There's many things that have changed since that time. About a little over a year ago, council approached the finance department with a possible review of the finance policy. And over the year plus, I have done just that, we have done just that. We've reviewed many other finance policies from surrounding municipalities and counties. We've had the, uh, review, the policy reviewed by our advisors and other individuals and we are prepared now to present that to council for a final review. Before doing that, I've issued a memo to mayor and council for mayor's consideration to appoint a committee that would assist management in a final review of the policy to add to, to subtract from, to make some changes that further enhance council's direction that they want to see the finance policy go. So with that, I would ask the mayor for his consideration to appoint a committee. If, if not, we'd be more than happy to bring the finance policy to y'all at the next work session agenda just for your open review, whatever mayor and council sees fit.
I, what I would like to do is to, our July 21st meeting, appoint that committee if that, that would work, and I think it is good to have the input from the council as you work through it and then, you know, get a recommendation from that committee at the same time, so we'll have that for the 21st.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, you have another item, results of the recent mixed drink audit.
Yes, thank you, once again. In September of 2015, if you can In September of 2015, if you can recall, the city of Canton contracted with the Georgia Municipal Association and the Resource Professionals Group to review and audit Canton's 30 restaurants that hold a mixed drink license. These license holders engage in the retail sale and pouring of alcoholic drinks within city limits. Records were examined for a three-year period spanning from January 2013 through December 2015. The final report from the GMA and the Resource Professionals Group was provided to the city on April 28, 2016. Each of y'all have a copy of that cover letter. To summarize their findings, out of the 30 restaurants, about 10 of those restaurants were found to be in compliance. Another 16 restaurants were found to be non-compliant. The remaining had, there were insufficient data, or there were too new of a business to formulate a statistical conclusion on, and so they were not appened upon. But those 16 restaurants that were found to be non-compliant, we're asking mayor and council to consider how we approach that, what they have found, and there's a lot of statistical background work that I'll be more than happy to present to mayor and council if y'all would want to peruse that. But what we're asking is, how do we approach these 16? Found there's to be about $25,000 in actual excise tax. We're talking about the 3% excise tax on alcoholic drinks. About $25,000 of tax, and up to about $70,000 in interest and penalties. One of the things that GMA has recommended, that they have found many municipalities to do, is to create some type of abatement period, meaning if we approach these businesses, these 16 businesses, and say, these are our findings, and of course, we submit to them all of that background data on their particular business. We submit to them and give them a period of time. First of all, we give them a period of time to dispute those findings, usually around 10 days, couple of weeks, and then we give them a period of time that may consist of 30, 60, 90 days, to say, if you're paid the excise tax portion of your delinquency during that period of time, we'll abate any further interest. And so, but in order to do that, in order to entertain something like that, we will need council's approval and permission to provide city management with that authority.
How do, how do we pay GMA for that? Is it a percentage?
No, sir. It was a flat fee based on the number of restaurants that were being audited.
Okay. That helps. Mr. Russ?
Nathan, do they have, if the GMA did the audit, do they have a procedural collection policy, and is this it in this document?
It is, and they just make some recommendations and give us some examples of what some other entities have done.
Do they have a unit that would help us collect? There's a portion that makes logical sense to do on a local level. Approach the restaurants, tell them what we found.
... We had to be aware, we had GMA, this purpose we had, and we just, GMA has provided us to have others, they're pretty much doing everything except for 30 minutes. As an example, Jennifer, the ladies, two guys, business, 16 businesses there at the front, so they're doing a lot of work, and they've provided us, that was too much to lose. And that's what I'm trying to do is try, we've got, trying to develop positive relationships with restaurants, even when we have mistakenly, I put this first, but some is deceiving us out to my relationship, but, so I'm trying to figure out, is this way to keep us kind of out of the loop, if we can get some rest, uh, back to home, I could have to...
There were a significant difference between restaurants. There were, I would say, maybe two or three out of significant deficiency dollar-wise and penalty-wise, and the penalty is a compounding penalty, and so, in many cases, the penalty's much larger than the actual amount of tax that they owe. Some restaurants, it was a very small amount, and so, you know, when they went in and they did the study, basically, they gave a 15% adjustment in the, there were breakage of bottles, or spillage, or, you know, or evaporation, or something like that of the actual alcohol. So, they tried to be very conservative when they went into this, but you still could have a situation where you're confronting a restaurant owner, and maybe, maybe the manager's not keeping the books correctly, or maybe you've got some employee theft, or something like that. You may not have a situation where you have 16 businesses that are truly trying to trick their way out of taxes, and so, I think what GMA's recommendation is, and what we would recommend to you is, look, let's go to them, let's show them the facts, let's show them the details of what we did, they can ask us questions, we can have GMA help us explain exactly what occurred in those situations, and how the measurements were done, and what we found, and this is, this is what you owe the taxpayers, this is what you owe the city in taxes that's due. If you, if you come clean within the next 30 or 60 days, we're going to waive that penalty, because, you know, this is the first time we've actually come to them, they estimate all of these things. So, in this instance, we're coming back with real data and saying, you underreported, and so, if you meet this, we're going to waive that penalty.
Is this the first audit that we've had of that kind?
This is the first one we've had on alcohol. Now, we've done it before on hotel motel taxes as a city, but this is the first one on alcohol, and basically, you know, you don't, this is not one that you would do every year. You really want to put the businesses on notice that there is a true measure to how you do the taxes, and if you're not reporting right, you need to learn that methodology, and you need to make sure you're reporting it right. But this is something from a staff perspective, from a management's perspective, we would bring before you and say, look, you know, this excise tax is not a huge, a huge part of the business of the city, but, you know, we may want to look at the hotel tax next year, because that is a much more significant number that comes into the city, and we need to make sure that's being collected correctly.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, number one, I'm glad we conducted this audit. I think it's great information for the city and also the restaurant owners, and I think, you know, we could possibly approach it as an educational opportunity for the restaurant owners. If they're unreporting or have reporting errors, it could indicate, you know, issues on their end from operational issues that they may not be aware of, so I would think that most of them would welcome that. Also, given the fact that we have 10 restaurants in the city that are totally compliant, I think, to be fair to them, we need to look at what the other 16 owes as far as just the taxes. I think since it was the first one, I mean, I think, you know, as far as the penalties, we could go beyond that, but also state that, you know, future audits, whenever, and if they occur, that, you know, we will, you know, be collecting the penalties, and then, just so everyone is on the same page and know where we stand, but I think, I think the data is very good, and I'm glad we conducted this audit, and I think it's a great educational opportunity for the restaurant owners.
May I add, the penalty is actually 10% of the excise tax, so if it's $25,000 in taxes, the total penalty we're talking about is about approximately $2,500. A good chunk of that is interest, which of course, you know, was compounded, so...
And that interest is over what period of years?
Three years.
Three years?
Wow.
Yes, okay. Ms. Wilson?
I was curious, one of the businesses required regulatory action. What constitutes regulatory action in those that we're sort of looking at?
So, in that instance, when GMA went in to do the research, they found that this was a business that was open for a period of time, this was a business that had purchased a great deal of alcohol during that time, and had not reported any income from the sale of that alcohol, so it would be turned over to the State Department of Revenue to investigate. So, it goes above and beyond our local act, they were, there was some concern that there was state law being violated by that particular vendor.
Does the state not get copies of this information? You would think that if they're, were not paying us, they're probably not paying them either.
Well, like everything else, it's an open record, so if the Department of Revenue wanted this information, or if they came to us and they said, hey, we've got a regulatory investigation on this particular, this particular business, do you have any information? Like with anything else, we'd be happy to provide them everything that we have.
So, you don't think GMA would be dealing with the state on the same sort of level, once they do ours and know there's deficiencies there? It would be very easy for them to go to the state and say, we can know where we can get you some money?
Well, the Department of Revenue has its own regulation and own auditing program, and so, from that standpoint, they're deciding on an annual basis where they're doing reviews, they're spot checking businesses across the state as part of that review process. We're concentrating ours just in our municipality, but they're doing that throughout the state on a, on a sample basis, just like the IRS would go in and audit on a sample basis.
Yeah. Mr. Russ?
One thing that strikes me is, it seems like the process is, you, thank you, that you're going to, we sell it in cans, barrels, bottles, it goes out in people's stomachs. There's a throughput there. It seems like the audit is really based on what goes in. Ultimately, over time, what goes in has to come out. So, the audit is primarily based on what is sold to that restaurant, is that correct?
In large part, yes, sir.
Because my only concern here is that, if you're really absolutely certain the audit is that perfect, you don't have to worry about it, but we, the government, GMA, could make a mistake, so we want to be sure that we know...
And that's where I think GMA is very conservative in this research. There's that 15% variance that they give. They're giving a good bit of flexibility on the front end, just in case there was a broken bottle, or just in case there was an issue and something spilled. I mean, if you're a restaurant and you're spilling over 15% of your alcohol on an annual basis, you have bigger issues that you need to be dealing with than the audit.
Sometimes the bartenders are always tagged with the fact that they're overpouring, underpouring, taking money, whatever.
And so, as part of this, what it does, I mean, the restaurants were given, basically, a survey, a template that they had to fill out for the city, and basically, that told us, okay, this is, this is the types of drinks that we offer, this is how many fluid ounces of liquor are in each of those drinks. I mean, there's a detailed process where the restaurants are providing us the information on the front end, GMA's doing the calculation and doing the research on sales on the back end, and we're giving them a bonus of 15% for error.
So, when you go in there, you're pretty sure that they owe money?
We're pretty sure, and we think that if we give them the flexibility of having that period of time to come clean and put the money back into the tax rolls as it should be, that, you know, we can vary from that penalty a little bit for that chance.
What do we do with the 3% when we collect it? Where does it go?
Goes into the general fund.
Okay. It doesn't go back to support education of bartenders or whatever? I mean, we got a licensing process, they've got to go through a school, right? But so, the benefit is strictly right straight back to the city?
It goes into the general fund, and our ability to collect those dollars allow us to set a millage rate that's lower for property owners.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else there? Anyone else have anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is going to require action, I think, tonight, and that's the discussion on intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County regarding resurfacing of Ivy Drive, that's sort of a joint project there.
So, Ivy Drive is one of those roads that exists both in the city and the county, and it is part of our resurfacing project that we're doing right now. This is an agreement that we need that basically says that we're going to move forward with our contractor to pave all of Ivy Drive, and the county will reimburse us for their share. They have already executed the agreement, they approved it earlier this week, so we just need your approval so we can get their money.
Make a motion to approve?
Hold on just a minute here. Ms. McGrue?
Okay.
Hold the thought.
Thank you. I make a motion that we accept and enter into this intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County to resurface Ivy Drive.
And direct the mayor to sign it? Can we do that?
Yeah, we need to add that on there. I need to sign it.
And the mayor should sign it.
And you second that motion?
I second that motion, thank you, Senator.
Motion seconded. Any other, see, Mr. Goodwin, sorry about that.
Yeah, I own property on, we own property on Ivy Drive, so I won't be voting on this.
Are you saying you're going to abstain?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, and one abstention. Mr. Goodwin. All members, with the exception of one. All right. Discussion of the hours of operation of the city parks.
Tom's here, he can answer any questions, but basically, as you recall at the last council meeting, we were having discussions about various items, and I told you we would have some parks-related items on the agenda. One of those was related to the hours of the parks, because we were talking about lighting of the trail and things like that, and I'll let, I'll let Tom carry the next few items.
Good evening. The first thing, we're talking about the park hours. After researching several other municipalities, and I stayed pretty much around the metro Atlanta area, there was only one that went dawn to dusk. Everybody else had specific hours for their park hours, and they ranged anywhere from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, 8:30 AM to 8:30 PM. Based upon our park needs and everything else, my recommendation is do Monday through Sunday, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
That's even in the winter?
Yes, sir. Because we do have some, for our program providers and those that rent field space from us, that they bring in temporary lighting, so they can either go late or into the fall, or they can start earlier or late winter. And they're usually done by 8:30 or 9 o'clock at the latest, but it gives them opportunity to get out of the park and everything else before the police comes patrolling through and everything.
Okay. Mr. Russ?
Tom, what happens if someone tries to run early, run late, walk the park early or late? Are they in violation of our, some code then, or what?
You're talking about like if somebody wants to go out there and exercise at 5:00 in the morning? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, sure. Or 11 o'clock at night, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I personally don't, that's not a problem, because the police will patrol at certain times, and if they see somebody, they will stop them.
And tell them to leave?
They'll either tell them to leave, they'll ask them what they're doing in there. We're just exercising, I've got to, you know, I usually do this early in the morning, I've got to get to work or whatever. That's up then to the officer that's at that point, or he may say, hey, we have stated times, you know, you're not supposed to be in here. But we can also adjust that, if we want to say in the springtime and in the summer, we can open up at 5:00 AM at that point.
I'm just wondering what good it does. For instance, if a police officer goes out there, he's got to catch the guy running, or the woman running, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. If they're on the trail, he won't see that person, you know, so...
Yeah, I think we're building a trail system that's going to be extensive, connecting all these trails, and some of the people can't, you know, they go to work early. You live in, live up here and you want to drive to Atlanta, you're going to leave home before 6:00 to get on 575 anyway, so I'm just wondering, what's the purpose of the hours? What are we trying to do?
Well, the purpose of the hours is keeping people outside of the parks when they're not supposed to be in there, and usually what goes on, you know, the old saying is apparent, what goes on after midnight, there's not a whole lot of good stuff happening, so we're trying to make sure, maintain the safety of our parks, as well as our citizens that...
So, there's some room for people to run at night if that's all they're doing? Or early in the morning?
Excuse me?
You could still do it.
Yeah.
You could still run early or late, or walk early or late?
I think what you're doing at that point is you're leaving it to the discretion of the officer.
Okay.
And, you know, from our perspective, if you put a time on there, it gives that officer an immediate reason why they can talk to that individual and find out what's going on. If they're there at, you know, midnight, it gives that officer an opportunity right then to say, look, you know, it's late, this park is closed, you know. Now, there's a flip side of that, when you give somebody discretion, you know, is it equally applied? And, you know, the only way that, the only way that you can equally apply that discretion, I think, is you're going to have to gate the parks, and close the gate, and open the gate at a certain time. Part of the reason why we got away from that at Edwah River Park was because our police department is responsible for unlocking the gate at 6:00 AM, and by God, if they were on a phone call on an emergency, and that gate was not unlocked at 6:00 AM, we had phone calls from residents that were wanting to know why their park was not open to them at 6:00 AM. We can look into electronic boxes and opportunities, that's something that we could do in the future. I think what we're really trying to do is say, tell us what you want, what's your wish? Do you want people out there running of the trails 24 hours a day? Are we in a 24-hour-a-day park environment? You've got to give us that direction. This is basically what other communities are doing.
Then I would support, I would support exactly what you're recommending, thank you.
Mr. Goodwin?
You said 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
Year-round?
Year-round, yes, sir.
And we're going to have plenty of lighting, right? Because... Because, you know, it gets dark at six o'clock here in the winter time.
Yeah, the reason that I did the ten o'clock was that covers our program providers and those that rent, uh, field space that do athletics, that bring in temporary lighting, so that the, you know, let's say it gets dark at six thirty during the, you know, winter time, so that the police don't come in there, and we still have practices going on with temporary lightings. Because on Saturdays when they have games or Sundays, they're over by six o'clock, seven o'clock at the latest. So they're not having to do light, the lights come in, and so they get practice time during the week.
Okay, my other question would be, I guess, Mr. Peppers or Chief Mitchell, um, on police in the parks, uh, those early morning, late evening times, uh, you know, we can't just casually some, send somebody over there. I think if you're over there early, really early by yourself, and we've already had some where people have jumped out of the woods and said some things and, and, uh, talked to people, say, hey, come show me the river, or, you know, that kind of thing. I just wonder, if we're going to have these extended hours, we're going to have to have some police protection there.
Well, I mean, our, our police department patrols all of our parks and recreational areas on their normal routine patrols. Uh, depending on which shift is working and which shift has that time, they patrol them at different, different hours. There's not a set time that they go to each of the parks. One of the things that, that I remind you of that, that, um, Chief Mitchell had requested as next year's budget was that pole camera, if you recall. And that gives us an opportunity, if we haven't, if we have a situation in a, in a particular area where we see that we're having some issues with maybe delinquents, or we see that we're having some, some calls or concerns from residents, we can put that camera up and watch. And it notifies our officers if something's triggered, if there's movement within that area, so that they can get out there. Um, you know, I don't think we're at the point where we want to put an officer in every park twenty-four hours a day.
I'm just curious if we're going to have a bicycle patrol through their, what, you know?
And so, a- as you recall, one of the things that the police department did in surplusing those motorcycles was to bring forward a recommendation to have an all-terrain vehicle for police that they could actually patrol the trails. And that is a vehicle that if they needed to, they could deploy in the middle of the night and could get across the bridge and the trails to do those things.
What is current hours of inner parks according to our ordinance?
Is dusk to dawn, or dawn to dusk, rather.
Okay. Mr. Rust?
I just thought of one quick issue. Uh, a couple of months ago, I went to a, a run at the park, Edwah Park. And although the run started, I think, at seven o'clock, there were people that were probably there at five. So when someone comes in for a permit to use the park, and they had to be there early, in fact, they got there so early the electricity wasn't on, was a problem. But you would allow, obviously, it was based on a permit, and they would be requesting a permit to allow that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next item. Let's go to the dogs in the parks and trails.
Yes, sir. Looked at, uh, not only municipalities here in the state, but all around the country. Pretty much every park system allows dogs in the parks. Um, they have to be on leashes. Um, they could be prohibited in certain areas like athletic fields, um, so that they don't leave their fecal matter on the playing surface where kids or adults will be playing. Um, also, they may have just designated areas, like a dog park, to where they can run around, and they're not leashed or anything like that. Uh, whether on walking trails or inside the park, they have to be on a leash, and the, um, owners of the pets have to clean up after their pets and put it in the appropriate receptacle.
Could we, could we restrict the length of that leash to ten feet or so?
Absolutely.
Some of these things will run way out there, you know?
Oh, yeah, those retractable leashes, yeah, they'll just let them go, but, um, yeah, we can absolutely put a restriction limit on what the leash can.
You know, maybe ten feet or so or something like that from, from the owner.
Absolutely. But we haven't had an issue, uh, we've only had a couple of issues with, uh, pet waste in the park. And, you know, it's been over a year since we've allowed the dogs in Edwah River Park. So the pet owners have done really well as far as cleaning up after their pets and putting them in, uh, putting their waste in the, uh, right receptacles.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Um, now, we do not allow dogs in any park, correct?
We, we do in Edwah.
In Edwah only.
Yes, ma'am.
So we would have to do away with our policy for having no dogs in any of the other parks, correct? If we adopted this?
That's what I'm proposing, yes, ma'am.
I'm going to, I, I don't mind dogs in Edwah Park, it's a new park. But in Bowling Park and over in Heritage Park, I'm not in favor of it, so I just want to let y'all know.
Okay.
If I could just make a comment, one of the reasons why we, we brought this up is because as we've connected parks with trails, it's, it's very hard for the user to understand what the rules are in varying parks. And now that they've got a connection between the two parks, we do get calls from people who say, oh, there's a dog in Heritage Park. Well, I mean, we allow dogs in Edwah Park, and they've just walked across the trail to get to Heritage Park. They may not know. Um.
I think we could put signs at the, at the bridge that say, no dogs allowed past this sign.
And Bowling Park is one of those areas where it's not connected currently with those trails, and so, you know, it's, we don't have as many issues over there because it's historically been no dogs in this park. So, but we need to know if you want the dogs on the trail, how far into the park you'll allow them, and things like that.
Ms. McGrue?
Thank you. An owner walking a dog has much more control over their animal on a shorter leash. I'm very much in favor of limiting the leash length to six feet. And having been through many dog training classes, that's a, a very good length for a leash.
Uh, Mr. Rust?
I have been to the new park three or four times and to the new tra, connector between that park and Heritage, and never have I been there that there hasn't been a dog going down that new connector from Heritage to Edwah or vice versa. And it, it's impossible to get somebody to understand that that's not allowed. So my opinion is this, when you have a connecting park, you either have to have them both or none. And it's working in Edwah, so I say, we use what worked in Edwah and go to Heritage with it. If it didn't work in, in Edwah, I'd say stop and do neither, but if it's working, let's make it work in Heritage. So I, I support it. I don't know if we have to be in a hurry to do the rest of the parks, but I'm not sure what that entails. Because where are the other big parks? Brown, uh, Bowling, Brown, where else do we have, we're going to allow dogs?
Cannon Park would be one, um, Burge, Burge Park.
Oh, Brown, last I just said, Brown. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, across the street, yeah. I'm thinking.
There's, there's several pocket parks too, but with those kind of, you just put one pet waste receptacle in the park.
I, I'd like to try it. If it doesn't work, we stop. I mean, the offenders are going to lose if they don't, don't obey. If they don't pick up their waste, that's the big issue.
I think we tried it and stopped. That's why we had that policy.
Mr. Allen?
Well, I had, uh, am I understanding you're asking to open all the parks right now, or just, are we talking about Heritage because of the connection?
Well, my recommendation was open up all the parks, but if, at the very, at the very minimum, I'd at least like to see Heritage being opened up to, to pets as well as our pocket parks, and then if we want to keep bowling where dogs aren't allowed, that would be fine.
Well, um, like Mr. Rust, I agree that it should be both or neither, and we did, Edwah is a pilot that has worked very well. And I say we expand the pilot to Heritage to see, and test that. As far as the pocket parks and Cannon Park and Brown Park, every single time there's an event, there are dogs everywhere. Turning up blind eye to.
That's exactly right.
Um, I mean, people expect to take them to events now, these days. I have no, I agree that it's probably a good idea to leave something like Bowling without dogs, especially for people that can't be around dogs or don't want to be around dogs. I had a question. Uh, all of us have spoken with Mr. Bonner, and his issue or question is about liability, so I would like to have a discussion about the liability and where we stand on that as far as someone being injured by a dog.
Well, we've, we've just had a court case this week where we had a dog-on-dog injury. And basically, the owner of the dog that was at fault was fined in our municipal court, uh, and was sentenced in our municipal court. Um, additionally, if there's an injury, you know, you open yourself up to civil, uh, civil suits as well. So we can, we can investigate those things. We can, we can try those things in municipal court. Um, you know, we as a, we as a community basically have the same liability whether you're hit by a bicycle or bitten by a dog, whatever we open that park up to, our liability is there. And the city's always going to be looked at as, as a potential deep pocket on a lawsuit. We're likely going to be named in it. If, if the owner is negligent, the owner's at fault, we clearly stated the rules, we've stated the rules about leashes, the dog's not on the leash, we're going to be out of it, you know? So, you know, liability is kind of that thing, you can't, you can't really say what your liability is opening up to because we already allow certain things in our park. I mean, you could get kicked by a soccer ball that's inherently flying over at Edwah River Park.
Every dog's entitled to one bite, aren't they? That's what I've always heard.
Two bites.
Mr. Grant?
Just want to mention, I've, I've been on the connecting trail dozens of times between the two parks, uh, and have seen the dogs on leashes, and, and I think they've all been very responsible, very well behaved. I do think that, like, the ten-foot leash, limiting that is, is a good idea. Um, uh, but I have had calls, I had, I had an instance for someone called me who drove all the way up from Woodstock because they heard about our trail and were so excited about it. They brought their dog up to walk, and they got to Heritage and they didn't know what to do. And, and, and so I think it's natural to, to allow them on that total connector. We're encouraging people to use the parks and get outside and be active, and it's another incentive for them to do it. And, uh, I don't think we've had any major issues with that. But I think if we want to at least expand it to that phase for now and, and leave bowling, um, dog-free, then that does give citizens an option if they don't want to be around dogs, so.
Mr. Allen?
Okay, you were saying that liability is not that different. Is there any difference between if a stray wanders on the parking bike somebody versus one that a citizen brought that we allowed?
I think the difference there is if it's a stray dog, you don't really have an owner that you can, that you can deal with there. You're probably in a situation where you're trying to catch the stray dog and putting it down, unfortunately.
But the city, the city's liability, I mean, from that.
Right. I mean, i- it'd be the same as if, I mean, you know, we, th- this policy deals with dogs. You know, you could, you could very easily be running on the trail and be hit by a deer, you know, or be hit, you know, be bitten by a snake. Our liability is going to be the same there as it would be with anything else.
And, and remember, the trial will be in a Cherokee County Superior Court. I believe Mr. Bonner wanted to make a, a comment, but we need, we, we will need to, uh, in order to allow that, we will have to have a vote. You want to talk? Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. We have to have a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Anybody want him to speak? We have a motion and we have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, Andy. Formality, but we have to do that.
I mean, our, our immunity, we're, we're different than the counties in the state of Georgia as it relates to immunity. Correct. We don't have as much immunity. But I would also say that we also allow people to walk on our sidewalks with dogs that are not in our parks. And if you're walking on the sidewalk and you get attacked by a dog, it's, it's really no different than walking in the park and being attacked by a dog from the standpoint of a liability to the city. We're opening it for anybody to enjoy. And in all fairness, there are a lot of families that don't have children, and they think they're, they, they treat their pets as children as well. And so I think what the council's trying to do here is have a discussion on whether or not we open up space for those families as well as those families that don't want space, and so. And I think that's what we're asking the council to decide, where they want to open those. It's correct, but I, I can point to many cases in the history of our nation where an elected body has said, this is the rule, and this is why this is the rule. And another elected body have come along and said, but we can progress past that, and we need to change the rule. And that's, that's part of the reason why, as public, you elect elected officials to make those decisions.
It'd be their decision to make. I, I would, I would ask our city attorney, are, are you aware of any distinction in liability with regard to age?
No, it'd be no difference, and I wouldn't consider the city allowing dogs in parks to be a significant increase in liability to the city. If somebody's going to sue the city when something happens to them at a park, then they're going to. The city is not going to be, unless the city brought the dogs to the park itself, the city's not ultimately responsible. Nothing can keep us from getting sued by greedy people, but there's no increase of liability in us allowing dogs in the park. That liability, of course, falls on the, the dog's owner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
I'd like for us to, I, I'd like to ask my council members to consider opening the new park, Edwah Park, for dogs and leaving the other parks as they are now. And that's for us to think about for when we get ready to vote.
Okay, Edwah is already open. You understand? Okay, okay.
That's the newest park?
Yes.
I'm sympathetic with people who have dogs. I have a dog, and we, we want to take him to the park. But I think there are other people who don't want to be in a park with the dogs. So I think we should allow some options, and so that's all I'm asking, that we have options.
Okay. Mr. Rust?
I'd just like to synthesize what Joelle said. She wants that term that came from the budget, status quo. She doesn't want any change. But I disagree with that. I, I, I want to go and allow, at, at least at the very minimum, both Heritage and Edwah because the experiment that we've all agreed was going to be an experiment, and Edwah seems to have worked. There's one technicality. We should identify the connector to be part of one or the other, or half and half, because the connector is going to have to allow dogs also. So that's not a part, technically, I don't think of either part. But so just from a standpoint of identifying where dogs are allowed, they're allowed in Edwah, Heritage, and the Connector Trail. Second question I have for you, Billy, you said you just had an injury, dog bite injury. Was that in the city of Canton? We were sued?
It was in the dog park. We were not sued. It was one dog owner versus another dog owner.
No, the dog, two dogs.
Two, oh, a dog attacked another dog?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Because I was, I was wondering what the result was.
The result was the owner of the dog that attacked was found guilty in municipal court, was fined, uh, and, and was put on probation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on that? All right, the next, the next issue, the discussion of the netting in Heritage Park. Now, ever since the day that thing went up, the idea was that when Etowah Park opened up, that would be taken down. That was the discussion a long time ago and forever. But now, I'm assuming your recommendation is that it come down?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, it's falling apart, the net is. Um, our maintenance workers have created holes so that people can go through so you don't have to walk all the way the long distance around to get to that side. And people still, even though it's twenty feet away, they'll still cut holes in it and our guys have to come in the next day and tie it up and everything else. That, that's on a, almost a daily basis.
But you're also recommending that it become an active park rather than just passive?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, you know, we, I'm gonna say this. Ultimately, the rea- one of the reasons that netting went up was cause we were having quite a bit of activity, soccer and so forth there. And, uh, we had complaints of people pushing, uh, baby carriages and dodging soccer balls and stuff like that. And people were, were worried about being hit.
One, to be active and, and accessible to everyone. And, I mean, I think having an, an active park is like allowing kids to go and, you know, dip their toes into the pool at the Y M C A but they can't swim. So, uh, I'm in favor of taking the net down as soon as possible, not investing any more money into that, uh, thing. And, uh, and have an active park, so.
I guess one of the questions I have regarding active, would we allow a group of boys to go out and play ba- Would stop it?
Well, that would be.
We got rules that say you can't play baseball?
Well, that's something we, that we can say for Heritage Park because it is, there's not a diamond- for a diamond-shaped field. So, that's not something that where baseball would all of a sudden be allowed to play.
I played baseball in yards many times that never had a diamond on.
But nowadays, if somebody wants to do that in their own yard, that's fine.
I'm not talking about teams, I'm talking about, you know, five or six get out there and hit a baseball. Would that be okay?
No, no, because that's, it's not, that, that park's not designed for that. There's no fencing to protect people from a flying, you know, baseball or softball that's been hit.
How do we define active, I guess would be my question?
Well, that's one thing that we can do with, uh, changing this to an active park, saying, you know, we can actually say specifically what is and is not allowed in that park.
I think we need to know that.
And baseball and softball would be.
Before we decide, we need to know what is going to be allowed and what's not.
Soccer in the, yes.
Okay, and Mister-
Because an active park is where any athletic activity is taking place. So, a passive park is where there's no athletic activity, so the best is open for exercise, fitness, walking, jogging, that kind of thing. And we were asked a few months ago to submit laws of the river, recommend the Anna Patre Corporation community. And I think this is a perfect time to act, this community, to come out with some of those plans and behaviors that Anna Patre said. And we're up with Mister Brown, Mister Pepper, and Miss Sesho.
Like Bowling Park, you know, is considered passive, there's parks around the area, I mean the state, there are half parks just like Bowling, which is nothing but trails and it's just wide open space so that people can come and they can take food and things like that, but there's no organized athletic activities out there. So, we can add that one, but organized athletic activities could be, have others to be active, but not for organized sports and teams and things that may be better, but a lot of the three church are active, so we can't have organized athletic activities. And we're telling you to reduce, we need to have it closed, so. And we're telling you this is a track, acceptable design to be an active park. For the most part, we have a question about that, rather than that, but it's designed to be wide open, fit to show make a flat green space surface that's perfect for soccer, crash, flat football, even tackle football practice. I tend to believe that, I don't know, to have just some sort of big, big terraces and areas that I haven't really realized if there's any similar square spaces. Rush, Mr. Cook, do you think the rest of the village? I don't know, yes, sir. One of the things that is likely within the budget this year that's an impact for the section is to put permanent restroom facility in that area where the control connects between area and Heritage. And then have little joints that impact the catwalk drive, which leads to that catwalk, that smart parking lot that they have that leads back into Heritage. One of the things that we do is part of our, of that one sewer project, we have water and sewer that have been that have been tatted and provided in case we wanted to do restroom stuff. So we have a spot where we can do some permanent restrooms. It's not as close to where we're going to do Heritage Park up until the future of restrooms, but it is still something we'll have. And another thing about the outdoor and heritage park, remember too, is the city's community center around the sewer such that we have Heritage Park and the ability to have active, active sports and things like that. Open that around so that we can do some of that in adjacent active facility, which might create more material that it sounds like animal transport. Could Heritage Park owners routinely use the rancher for the restroom? And if they're allowed, anybody can get a bypass to the rancher.
I don't know, maybe the rancher uses the restroom, I don't know, should they? If I know that the bus can never shut the bathroom.
Yeah, I would think, yeah. At the time, Bowling was supposed to be a restroom, huh? I got the trailer that had the little service and I was trying to try. But at least the food restroom, I was suggesting that it was, it's a long distance from that spot to where the restroom is and and the other places and that, that's the, that's the halfway, which now we have the parking area, which is a great parking area now, I don't know if it's needed in the village to expand that so it can have more parking. They're kind of in the middle, so you can decide on which parking. There are vision construction running behind the ranches, that's, that's our bad rancher. I understand. Thank you, thank you. Okay, I have a next round of discussion of the power of drones. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's, concession, a lot of land is a lot, concession stand, operations. Now, this is another, they did the first Saturday that we had three evaluations, trying the crash and soccer and flat football. And I was actually active for a couple hours that Saturday. It was overpass, it was about 55 degrees, it was windy, so it was the parents and the families were watching while the games were all wrapped up in blankets and everything, so it was very chill, especially if you weren't running out up on the field. So they didn't have much traffic up there at the concession stand. There was not any signage placed by them saying that the concession is broken. We emailed out of the program for babbles and they were outside about how the open concession stand was apart. They did not go down to the field to kind of at least run up, at least take a tour of the bound or whatever. Especially now that it's going to be actually cold day, there was nothing there from a traffic, hot traffic perspective. So that Monday morning, we had an email from WPD that said, we opened the concession stand this weekend, it was not going to work. We have four customers, just on the floor, and that was supposed to be the business schedule of soccer, crash and flat football. So they did not do the concession stand anymore at that point. So my recommendation is for us, as a city, personal police department to take over the concession stand. We tried two different teams to get the parking that was running, but it didn't work. So we can do a next best job doing that in the house, stacking, stacking it ourselves and running it ourselves. So I said, that's what they were like, that pass, the running down pass, that's the toughest part of it. It wasn't certain to resist that, I was like, but you got another right to, I was like, we can do a next best. But we have to run, so that's why I was after, so you got to realize that to take that to account. And I said, to take it to account, but I had enough time to do it truly. But I did that, told you, I was about to. I did it, and I'm not very patient with the pass, that's, yeah, that's exactly, because I had a little sign about having that and just like, we just couldn't, and I had to turn that, and it worked. Thank you. Drones, drones. I still have a thing through the Georgia State Patrol, special association, and I actually heard back from more people saying, hey, you've got enough motion, do you still have the main? A lot of, a lot of those brothers around the state, especially, this is a big hot topic for them. So we got several here that have actually enacted amendments from the city of Shandalee, from Cherokee County, and Cedar Point, Park and Rec, which is in Sustia, Ohio. And I also included some articles from a couple places around the country, Oakland, California, as well as Arizona with their county parks. And in Oakland and in Arizona, they just banned any kind of unmanned, uh, systems out together. In Shandalee, Cherokee County, they just, they banned them in the parks except that unless it's a stack, it doesn't matter whether it be by the Park and Rec or his doesn't need. First off, County didn't see any issue with all of them, so they allowed them in their parks. From Masstamper, I mean, you've seen it, I think it was after the US Open, tennis match, and throwing and crashing them by running up and down their bleachers. We put a couple things around the country where people throw in guns at parks over the kids' pathways to get some air, uh, for days of fun. And the thing crashes in the middle of the field. So it is a danger from safety hazards, so it'd be, we could allow them in the parks, but they're in specified areas. But we tell them they cannot farm, they cannot farm over, you know, the rest of the park, but if they're not out, just in that one specific area.
So right now they are allowed, if there's no ordinance against it?
Technically, because there's nothing to say that there's not, yes ma'am.
What do you see the difference in a remote control airplane and a drone then?
A lot of the remote control airplanes are bigger than me. So once you get those, it's the same thing, the way. Come down right in the middle of a, you know, a game that's going on in the field or even people that are out exercising.
So if we're going to regulate drones, we'll need to regulate remote control airplanes also?
Yes.
Because it's technically the same thing, one takes pictures and one does not.
Oh, any kind of toys, anything like that that flies, it's just have to be in a certain designated area. Yeah, minus kites.
Mr. Rush?
I think you have to be careful to define what unmanned is, to be, make it broad enough. I sat, in fact, I was at the Rock Barn, some guy one night and he explained to me, for 20 some years he's been flying airplanes, you just whip them in the air and they catch a draft. And it's a big club, if somebody showed up with that kind of thing, it's the same issue. Because once they go up, they're hard to control. And if you don't like dogs there Andy, you're not going to like something buzzing over your head that's not being controlled by some. So define it as unmanned because I think just drones is going to leave some gaps.
That's what, that's the use of engine powered models, toys, unmanned aerial systems. And we can go further in depth into that if you want us to.
Well, I think you just have to make it clear to people that anything's unmanned, motorized or un, is going to be banned, period. Thank you.
Anyone else on that? Okay, let's go to types of vehicles.
All right, what I did is I looked at several municipalities around the metro area that have trail systems and to see what they allowed on their trails and in their parks. Alpharetta being one, they have the Big Creek Greenway, Cherokee County, as well as the city of Woodstock and then Forsyth County also has a greenway. So they regulate their vehicles on there, but they do allow bicycles, skateboards and that kind of thing along their greenways or along their trails inside their parks.
No motorized vehicle, I mean like scooter, that, electric scooters and stuff like that?
Nothing like that, it's all like.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
There's a bicycle trail at Bowling Park that the scouts have put in, just above the walking park. So here again, since there's no asphalt or anything and that gravel, I don't think you could ride a bicycle or anything on that gravel. We might look at Bowling Park, bicycles or skateboards all just be allowed on the bicycle area of that park. Since you can't, you couldn't ride your bike in that park unless you're out in the middle.
Okay, Mr. Rush?
With those little two foot hoverboards that are all catching fire all over the country, they would be disallowed?
Yeah, that's something that will not be allowed, no, because of the fire hazard.
Thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I see that no person under the age of 16 should be allowed to operate bicycle or whatever without a helmet. Is that a state law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Tom, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Pepper, city manager report.
The only thing I have to report is, as you can see, if you drive around the city, we are underway with our paving projects and things seem to be going pretty well over there. We have paving that's going on in the River Green neighborhood. We also have paving throughout some other streets with our grant from the state, our paving grant from the state and other things. And we have received very good feedback from the residents that are excited about those projects moving forward. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. McGrew?
I was asked this evening about when the paving might begin on Brown Street. Do you have, could we have a spreadsheet with an estimated time of paving of these streets?
Basically what we're getting is we're getting a list of streets about a week ahead of time from the, from the paver, paving company and they're basing that on, you know, what happens the week before, you know. So if they, if they've planned to do, I believe they've got five streets on the list for next week and I don't have those right in front of me. But, you know, should we have rain the next two days, they might kick them back. So they're trying not to announce certain dates yet on all the streets until they get that next week done. But I'll be happy to look into that for you.
Anyone else? If not, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, possibly real estate, possible litigation.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
We coming back on?
We will not be.